Moore County Schools Board of Education Work Session Meeting on September 2nd, 2025. We are called to order at 1:30 PM. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Mr. Benway, is there a second? Second, Dr. Dahl. So, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Welcome, everyone. It's good to have you today. And we are at our Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Benway, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and just as it is.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone. Ms. Davis, would you lead us in a moment of silence?
Yeah, I'm just remembering that we are going in still, just starting a new school year, and just keep our teachers and students and staff in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're at Item Two, Reports, Information, and Discussion. Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're pleased. We had a suggestion last spring to have both of our junior ROTC programs present and give updates to the board. We call teaching and learning updates around the great things that are happening in our schools. We had our Union Pines Naval ROTC present in the spring, and now we have the opportunity to have our Pinecrest Air Force Junior ROTC present. We've got some great student leaders that are going to be sharing with us along with Commander Major McClay, and so we're very appreciative of them. And I'd like to go ahead and call them up right here, to this area here, and you guys can rotate through. We've got three mics. Also, Principal Matt McLean is here with us, and so we want to welcome them all. And I'll turn it right over to Mr. McLean, who I imagine may want to do a quick introduction.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Locklear. My name is Matt McLean. I get to be the principal at finest school in the land, Pinecrest High School, so thank you for that opportunity. And I want to introduce Major McClay and our cadets. They are an outstanding group of students. I got to see them this summer at our Summer Leadership Conference where they, Major McClay was, I'm going to say the term wrong, but I think the commandant, or the commander of the Leadership Conference down at Methodist University. There were Air Force Junior ROTC units from Charlotte and Points West all the way to the coast. And our students received a lot of awards, and I'm just going to pass it off to Major now. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Major McClay. Just a little bit about our program before I turn it over to the cadets. Pinecrest AFGR ROTC is an honor unit. We have won the Distinguished Unit with Merit Award for the last two years. We've earned exceed standards, rating on perfect scores in the last two inspections. Air Force Junior ROTC is an Air Force-funded program for high school students that aims to instill values like integrity, citizenship, leadership, and service to the nation, while also offering academic, physical fitness, and practical life skills. It provides enjoyable, rewarding, structured, military-style environment. We're creating strong, independent future leaders. Our mission is to develop citizens of character, not to recruit for the military. Our primary goal, maximize integrity, instill personal responsibility, self-discipline, and a sense of accomplishment in the cadets. We currently have 134 cadets in our program. We have after-school extracurricular activities four days a week, all throughout the year. We typically do four field trips a year, one Military Ball, and march in three parades. And starting this year as part of the CTE program, well, cadets can earn NOCTI Industry Credentials through the work keys testing. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to my cadets.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Aiden Stone. I'm the Group Commander of AFGR ROTC at Pinecrest. Just a little bit about myself. I've been in this program for three years, going on my fourth as a senior. I've been a part of our drill team, color guard team, raider team, awareness presentation team. I founded our Kitty Hawk Air Society, as well as I've been to our Cadet Leadership Camp over the summer, three times, two of which I was cadre, which is a leadership position. And the last time I went, I was the second-in-command of the camp. In ROTC, as Group Commander, I am responsible for the vision, goals, objectives, and operations of the unit, and most importantly, I'm the image and example. I first heard about ROTC in eighth grade, when I was in a computer science class I did not like, and I had no idea what it was, and I wanted to leave. So, I went to their recruitment, and I got intrigued, so I joined. And fast forward three years later, it gave me character, discipline, a lot of leadership opportunities, and it's created the person I am today. As you can see, this is our overview of what we'll be going over in this briefing, the mission of AFGR ROTC, our cadet staff, unit goals, our wellness program, LDR activities, morale welfare and recreation, community service, our Flight Academy, cadet enrichment activities, our curriculum in action, cadet accomplishments, and our parent support group. This is our organizational chart of our cadet staff, with me at the top, as well as our Operations Officer, Cadet Major Nikala Gavrilis, our Command Chief, Chief Master Sergeant Carter Lynn, and our Executive Officer, Cadet Second Lieutenant Chloe Enlow. Believe it or not, AFGR ROTC is not a program dedicated to recruiting you for the military, but to develop citizens of character. Our unit motto is integrity above all, and integrity is our most valued tenant. We also have our own ten tenants, courage, attitude, dedication, effort, teamwork, perseverance, respect, integrity, duty, and excellence, which spells cadet pride, because our cadets take pride in striving towards these tenants. We also have goals in AFGR ROTC, three types, community impact goals, cadet impact goals, and school impact goals. But today, I'm only going to be talking about our community impact goals, because that's most relevant to our briefing. Throughout the year, cadets accumulate specific amounts of, sorry, specific hours in community service correlating to their year. First year is eighteen hours, second year twenty, third year twenty-two, and fourth year twenty-five. We average around twenty-five to thirty-five events per year, so we have many opportunities to reach these goals. Another one of our goals is our Operation Piece of Home, which we get boxes of chocolates and either sell or sponsor the boxes. Selling them is our fundraising for our Military Ball, Field Trip, and other scholarships. Sponsoring is when somebody buys a box but doesn't take the chocolate, and instead it's shipped over to our deployed troops. Last year, we had five hundred and sixty-one total boxes sold and a hundred and twenty-one sponsored boxes, shipped over six thousand bars of chocolates to our deployed troops. Another one of our goals is our Operation Blue Skies, where we collect canned food and donate it to our local food bank. Last year, our goal was fifteen hundred pounds of canned food, but instead we reached over two thousand. One of our other goals is for our Kitty Hawk Air Society, which is basically AFGR ROTC's NHS. Our goal was to have at least one event for Kitty Hawk, but instead we had five, including our Operation Save the Mountains, which is where we collected supplies to donate to the people who endured the tragic events of Hurricane Helene. Next, I'll pass it over to our Command Chief, Chief Master Sergeant Carter Lynn.
Hello. I'm Cadet Chief Master Sergeant Carter Lynn. Hello. Okay. I'm Cadet Chief Master Sergeant Carter Lynn, Command Chief here at NC-043. A little bit about myself. I've been in the program for three years, going on my fourth, my senior year. I've been to our Cadet Leadership Course, three years, two of which was cadre, which as Stone mentioned, is a leadership position. My most previous year, I was the Sports and Logistics Commander, which is in the top five. Both of my years as cadre, I had the fastest mile time in the entire camp. My role as Command Chief in our Corps is to represent the needs of the cadets to our senior staff. First today, I'll be talking about our wellness program. Every Friday, our Cadet Corps participates in a fitness test in a team sport. This is to encourage physical development and team building. The physical fitness test consists of a minute of push-ups, a minute of sit-ups, and a mile run. In order to achieve the maximum score, males must achieve forty-two push-ups, fifty-three sit-ups, and complete their mile run in less than eight minutes. The females must achieve twenty-six push-ups, fifty-three sit-ups, and complete the run in less than ten minutes. Again, this is for the maximum score. We take pride in our PT program. Another part of our wellness program is our intramural sports. These takes place after school every day on Thursday. It takes place between two class periods and a tournament-style schedule. In the fall, we plan on playing Major League and ROTC ball, and in the spring, we plan on playing speedball and capture the flag. Once a semester, we hold Sports Day, which is where you get the entire Cadet Corps to compete against each other in several activities. This includes a drill competition, an obstacle course, a force march, an Iron Cadet Challenge, and team sports. Afterwards, we have lunch provided by our parent support group. Up on screen is a few pictures from our Sports Day. The big one is our entire Cadet Corps, and then the two smaller ones is our Iron Cadet Challenge and one of our team sports. Now, I'll be talking about our logistics program. Every year, our cadets are issued a uniform, PT gear, unit PT gear, integrity shirt, and a unit gold polo shirt. All of these items are given to them during Operation Patriot Basic. Last year, during Operation Patriot Basic, our logistics team was able to outfit sixty cadets with all of these items in a single day. Next up is our Operations Officer, Cadet Major Nikala Gavrilis.
Good afternoon. I'm Cadet Major Nikala Gavrilis, and I'm our unit's Operations Officer. I've been in our program for three years, going on my fourth, during which I participated in Raider Team, Kitty Hawk Air Society, and our Awareness Presentation Team. I've also graduated from our Cadet Leadership Course, where I earned the Academic Award and the Fastest Mile Time Award for Females, and I won the Iron Cadet Challenge for Females. I first heard about our program through an Awareness Presentation Team visit to my middle school, and I thought it looked very interesting, so I went home and signed up. And three years later, here I am. I've learned discipline, leadership skills, I've built my confidence, and I've met a lot of great people and made a lot of good friends in our program. As Operations Officer, I'm second-in-command of our Corps, and I'm responsible for managing team activities and ensuring standards are followed. First thing I'm going to talk about is our leadership development requirements, which are our extracurricular activities, teams, and clubs. These are voluntary and give cadets many opportunities to lead. I'll talk about the first few in a minute and go over the rest of the list briefly, starting with Awareness Presentation Team. Awareness Presentation Team is our team of cadets that travels to middle schools in our area to explain our program and encourage them to join. Our Cyber Patriot Team is a competitive computer science team that participates in cyber defense competitions. Our EC Activity Team visits our EC Program students once a month, and we participate in activities such as pumpkin carving, Easter egg hunt, and Christmas ornament making. Our intramural sports is our after-school sports competitions, which were previously mentioned. Our Stadium Cleanup is our Saturday morning community service, where we clean up the stadium the morning after our Friday night football games. Our Military Ball Planning Team plans and organizes our annual Military Ball in conjunction with our parent support group. Our Flag Detail raises and lowers the flags every morning and afternoon. Commander's Call is our monthly awards and information ceremony for cadets and their families, and I'd like to point out that the star next to Commander's Call and Green Team means we have one hundred percent Corps participation in these events. Our Green Team is our Campus Cleanup Team. Our Model Rocketry is where we build and launch rockets, and if you complete all the requirements, you earn a rocketry badge, which myself and Cadet Stone have earned. And our Morale Welfare and Recreation Team plans our morale boosting and team-building events, such as our Halloween parties, our Christmas parties, and our New Year's parties. Now, I'd like to talk about Color Guard, commanded by Second Lieutenant Emily Felch. This team presents colors at sports games, ceremonies, and community events, and last year, we had a total of forty-seven events. And here's some pictures of our Color Guard in action. Our Drill Team, commanded by Second Lieutenant Gabriella Brunson, is our Competitive Marching and Exhibition Team. At Terry Sanford High School Competition last year, we placed top three in two separate events. Here's some pictures of our Drill Team in action. Our Raider Team, commanded by Second Lieutenant Matthew Chavez, is our most popular and my favorite. It's a competitive physical fitness team, and we participate in obstacle courses, relay races, tire flips, and tug-of-war. And at the Piedmont High School Raider Competition last year, we sent two teams and placed first and third out of twenty-three teams. And here's some pictures of our Raider Team in action. Our Military Ball is an annual event planned and organized by our Military Ball Planning Committee and our Parent Support Group. We had around two hundred and fifty cadets and guests last year, including Mr. Benway and Mrs. Phillips, held at Sand Hills Community College. This is a fun and popular event, because we have a formal dinner, followed by an awards ceremony, and then at the end, we have music and dancing, making it one of our most highly anticipated events of the year. Kitty Hawk Air Society, commanded by Second Lieutenant Freya Fullerton, is like an honor society for Air Force Junior ROTC, with a focus on community service and fundraising. Last year, Kitty Hawk Air Society planned and led multiple successful events, including Operation Save the Mountains, Jacket Drive, Operation Blue Skies Canned Food Drive, and Toys for Tots, during which we were the largest donor. Next up is our Executive Officer, Second Lieutenant Chloe Enlow.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Cadet Second Lieutenant Chloe Enlow and the Executive Officer at NC-043. I've been in the program for three years, going on four. During my time in JRTC, I've been in Awareness Presentation Team, Drill Team, and Kitty Hawk Air Society. In addition to that, I've also graduated from Cadet Leadership Course. As the Executive Officer, I'm responsible for scheduling and coordinating activities, the operations of the senior staff, and, all tasks assigned by the Corps Commander, and acting as Secretary of the Command Staff. The first thing I'm going to be talking about is community service. Last year, we had twenty-five community service events, including Woodlawn Cemetery Cleanup, where we go to the Woodlawn Cemetery and take care of groundskeeping, as well as Young Eagles, which will be touched on later, Military Family Fair, and Keep More Beautiful, the annual shredding event. These are pictures of a few of the community service events we've had, including the Veterans Day Parade. The next thing I will be talking about is Morale Welfare and Recreation, which is basically like the parties throughout the year. They are one hundred percent cadet-led, cadet-run, and supported by the Parent Support Group. We hold a Welcome Back Picnic, Halloween Party, Thanksgiving Potluck, Christmas Party, New Year Celebration, Valentine's Bingle Karaoke, and End of Year Picnic. These are some pictures of the cadets in action, including Sports Day, intramural sports, and Stadium Cleanup. Every year, we take four field trips. Two of them include the whole Corps, in which we have gone to Honda Jet Facility, Greensboro Science Center, and the Airborne and Special Operations Museum. The third one, the juniors go with Master Sergeant Jefferson to Caddiesburg, Pennsylvania for four days, and the fourth, the seniors go with Major McClay to Washington, DC for four days. These are some of the pictures from the field trips we went on last year. Next up is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Aiden Stone.
Next, I'll be talking about our Flight Academy. Our Flight Academy is a highly selective program where, in which only around ten percent of the nation gets to get into. The goal of this program is to give cadets a chance to have free, a free academy dedicated to giving them their private pilot's license. Over the last two years, we've had three people go, including Cadet First Lieutenant Ethan Schlecker, Cadet Captain Nathan Baxley, in which they both earned their private pilot's license, and Cadet Technical Sergeant Porter Stout, who got up to a solo. These are some pictures of them at the Flight Academy after earning their private pilot's license. Another thing we do is Young Eagles. Twice every year at the Moore County Airport, we go out and we give children free flights ages eight to seventeen, just to give them a look into aviation. Around fifteen of our cadets go to help execute and operate this event. One of our other scholarships is the DeDalian Flight Scholarship. Last year, only one cadet in all of Moore County got selected for this, and that was Senior Airman Wade Bartlett, who earned all the way up to a solo and is now a student pilot. Next, I'll hand it off to our Chief Master Sergeant Carter Lynn.
Hello. Throughout the year, our program offers many cadet enrichment activities. This includes the Cadet Leadership Course, which I mentioned previously. All four of us have attended. This year, it was held at Methodist University, where we had thirteen cadets have the opportunity to go and represent our school and community at this camp. We also hold Sports Day, once a semester, where our cadets go out and they compete against each other in several activities, which I touched on earlier. The overall winner of which, not to brag, is the class I was in charge of, Delta Flight. During the summer, we also hold Camp Hope, which is where we have incoming cadets come in and learn about our program. We had twenty-two cadets come in over the summer and learn about our program. Our program has been given many awards. This includes our Cadet Leadership Course, where all of the cadets we sent got a hundred percent on their physical fitness test. All of our cadets got at least one award, and our Aiden Stone here was the CLC Deputy Commander. During the 2023 to 2024 school year, we also achieved Distinguished Unit with Merit, which only ten percent of the, not nation, of AFGR ROTC units achieve. Next up is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Aiden Stone.
Next, I'll be talking about our scholarships. We have many scholarships that are awarded to the best of our cadets, including AFGR ROTC Parent Support Group Scholarship, Military Officers Association of America Scholarship, our Rotary Club Scholarship, Oaks Club, American Legion, Daughters of the American Revolution, and Daughters of 1812 Scholarships. This is what we talked about in our briefing. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Mark, you've got a hundred and thirty-four cadets onboard. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
What's your max capacity?
Like a hundred and thirty-five.
All right, great. Given the growth, given the growth here in Moore County over the next decade, your potential to grow, I think, is there. What would it take to expand your program?
Well, mostly we're limited to desk, desk and classroom size space. We could take more if we want.
So, it's facilities defined, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We need to get you more facilities then.
Would we need another member of the instructional staff?
We'd get another instructor at a hundred and seventy-five cadets. We can get a third instructor.
Okay.
That's, Air Force, Headquarters Air Force defines that number.
Sure. Okay, great. Thank you. I want to commend everybody for the presentation today. It's always tough getting up there and picturing your thing, but you've got a great program going, energized by some real talent here. And I'd like to point out that an awful lot of these, these young students, the freshmen, et cetera, they gain academically by this sort of an environment backing them up. This is the ideal kind of a elevated culture, if you will, in the classroom and in campus. I want to commend these folks, and Mr. McLean too, for your, your support, and Ms. Phillips for her support all along for many years. So, great, great program. Thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, welcome. You guys were outstanding. It's so good to see you. It's refreshing. It's your dynamic. I'm going to ask some really dumb questions. First of all, is eighteen to twenty-five hours a volunteer throughout a week, a year? Like you said, eighteen for freshmen and twenty-five for seniors. Is that enough hours?
What do you mean by enough?
Um, what do I mean? It, it just seems like you guys are so busy doing all these things. How come you don't have like hundreds? How come you don't have like hundreds of hours?
That's just the minimum. That's, that's the minimum requirement that we have for each year. So, all of those years have to reach those hours, but we have many more. I think last year, our top cadet was forty-five to fifty hours.
Okay, because that's what I would think with your involvement with everything, that the hours are, are very low compared to what you do.
That's our minimum.
Yes, you do exceed it.
That's just our minimum for cadet.
Okay, I, I want to know what kind of push-up the females do. Is it the one that's on your knees or is it a full push-up?
It's a proper push-up, man.
It's a proper push-up. Okay. I, I wanted to know. And you won on that?
Yes, for CLC, I did win the Physical Fitness Award and the Iron Cadet Challenge for Females.
And I do want to note, she was way ahead of the rest of them.
Wow. Could we ask how many?
How many what?
Push-ups.
Oh. Um, do you remember the?
It was, I think it was twenty-five push-ups, twenty burpees, forty sit-ups, and...
There were bodybuilders too.
Oh, yeah.
And then in between each exercise, we had to run a lap around the track.
Oh, okay. Excellent, okay. The other one was, would you explain your cyber defense team?
So, it's basically a computer science team, so they learn kind of how to defend against cyber attacks. So their competitions are basically, I guess they have a sort of practice cyber attack and they have to defend their computers against it.
Okay, okay. The other thing was, where do you get all your money for all the scholarships that you do? Is that, do you grow that over the whole year?
Yes, ma'am. So, throughout the year, we have a few fundraising events, like our boxes, our chocolate boxes.
Right, okay.
And we also get some donations sometimes. And we are trying a fundraising for, what is it called? Group Fund? We have a group fund this year to see if that'll raise any money for us.
Okay, because you have some wonderful scholarships there. So, I, I really commend you. I, I think you are absolutely fabulous, and I'm very, very proud of you. Very.
I would just echo what Mr. Benway said, is that you guys set the standard for what we want for an elevated campus culture. And I'm curious how you guys see yourself influencing your peers that are not involved in your group. That's a pretty broad question, but how you get people maybe involved with your group, or if they just don't want to be part of the JROTC, how you best influence, you know, how the, the culture of the campus and mutual respect. I wrote down team building and making sure that standards are followed. So whenever you're going to school and someone's not necessarily holding to the standard, but they're not part of the ROTC, you know, how you guys encourage them to keep that.
I think a lot of our ROTC cadets are friends with people outside of ROTC, plenty of them. And I know from experience, because I have some friends that aren't in it, I know that I rub off on them sometimes, and I kind of help them discipline themselves sometimes, like, why are you doing this? Why are you doing that? There's no reason for it. But I do think that we rub off on the other students sometimes, because they'll see us marching around, picking up after ourselves, and then sometimes they'll be like, oh, maybe I should do that too.
That's what I was looking for you to say. Something, if you have a good, a good, strong presence, just even being in, in a place will, will raise, will elevate the culture. And I know that, Mr. Benway, all of us, you know, we want that for our schools.
Yes. Questions?
I'll just make a comment and say, thank you so much for being here. Always very impressive. Great young people. As always, the two things that stuck out to me is I love the awareness presentation down to the middle schools, and I think that's an extremely strong component. I love breeding that early to make sure you grow your program in the right way and get the kids involved. The other thing I just wrote down is that Flight Academy, that is such an extremely important piece of it, and they are, the, the nation is in dire need of pilots and maintenance workers and all kinds of aviation associated workforce type of thing, so was really glad to see that too. So, I didn't really have any questions, just bragging. So, great job.
Dr. Doll, did you want to brag?
I want to brag, so I'm saving my.
I, I want to echo what my colleagues have said. I want to thank all of you for coming. You present yourselves extremely well, and obviously, this is a great program that is doing a lot of good, not just for the kids in the program, but, you know, for, for the other kids to whom you're an example. So, again, thank you and congratulations on, on all that you do.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Major McClay, if I could. One, can Lieutenant Colonel Benway already asked about the facilities. My other question is funding. Obviously, you get funding from the federal government, and you do fundraising for optional stuff. Do you get any funding from Moore County Schools?
Not that I'm aware of.
So it's all federal, federal funding, or you, I mean, obviously, we provide facilities and whatnot. But outside of facilities, it's all federal funding and, and money you guys raise?
As far as I know.
Great, thank you.
Okay, just a minute to brag for me too. My heart swells every time I see you in the public, and this presentation was amazing. Thank you for your service, you know, in our community as a, as a ROTC student. It means a lot. And we're so grateful that you came today to share this wonderful information. And I really like, you know, your goal is integrity above all. That would be a goal for all of us to, to hold true to. So, thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Locklear, Mr. Benway, for bringing these amazing students to share with us today. Thank you, Mr. McLean. Thank you. All right. Yay!
Thank you, folks.
I got a class.
Great job, guys.
We'll take a five-minute recess to allow everyone to leave. Thank you.
We'll come back into order. Thank you again, Mr. Benway, for inviting our special guest. And we're at item three, closed session. And as you see on the agenda, we have added our, according to Mr. Schwartz, our attorney, that we needed to add some information about confidential student matters. So in order to add that, at this time, we need an amendment to add that item to the closed session agenda.
So Madam Chair, this would be a motion to amend, since you've already adopted the agenda, this is a motion to amend the agenda to revise the closed session motion, and this would require two-thirds vote, which is five votes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I move, we amend the agenda to, I've forgotten already what Mr. Schwartz said, but to include the language for the, for the description of the closed session. Is that close enough? To revise the closed session motion. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we've amended our agenda. And at this time, we are, is there a motion to go into closed session for the purposes as stated on the agenda, amended agenda? Okay. Motion by Mr. Benway, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We'll go into closed session.
... Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back in open session and we're at item four, pending action and discussion. Item A, North Carolina Protection Group Security Personnel Contract. Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pleased to have Ms. Sinan and Air Chief Gooch present today and introduce our guests who are here from the North Carolina Protection Group. As we know, Moore County Schools is uniquely positioned with its own police force, which I think we have a lot to be grateful for having that police force in our school district. And the Board has been very supportive of that over the years. Two years ago with a additional raise for our school police with the state average of 4%, school police got 8%. Then last year, last fall, an additional 10% raise. But just like every other division and department across the state, really, very high challenges recruiting school police or recruiting police officers in general. So with that reality, we're continuing to work, continue to work to recruit and have police officers and a fully staffed police force. But we began to explore the opportunity to have security personnel and officers, unarmed security personnel and officers in our schools where we don't have full-time officers, to provide to the extent best possible a safe and secure environment for our students and our staff and our community. So with that, I'm pleased to be presenting this opportunity. I think we feel very good about this, being able to serve our students and staff and our district and the flexibility that this offers as well. So I'll turn it right over to Ms. Sinan, and this does come with my recommendation.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. As Dr. Locklear said, we're consistently looking for ways to make sure that we are fully staffed with our Moore County Schools Police Department. However, we currently have 14 vacancies and even though we continue to recruit as many ways as we possibly can through social media, through word of mouth, trying to get the best police officers we can for our Moore County Schools Police Department, we still have those vacancies. Today, like Dr. Locklear said, we're bringing forward for your consideration a contract, a contract with NC Protection Group, to have six security officers, unarmed security officers at six of our elementary schools that will cover elementary schools that do not have a school resource officer that is in close proximity or a local police agency that's in close proximity. Those schools that we are looking at are Cameron Elementary School, Southern Pines Elementary School, Westmore Elementary School, West End Elementary School, McDeeds Creek Elementary School, and Sandhurst Farm Life Elementary School. Along with this, in the contract, we are also asking for a security officer supervisor that will be the point of contact for Moore County Schools, will be the point of contact for the security officers. They will, that person will work closely with our interim chief Gooch to make sure that we are following the Moore County Schools way and we are doing everything we can to protect our students. This group will provide an additional layer of support for our students and our staff and our families. They will intervene as needed. They will, you know, check the campus, you know, walk the campus, make sure that there's not anything there that doesn't need to be there. They will help with de-escalation and also being proactive with our, with our schools. At this time, I'm going to introduce our folks that are here from NC Protection Group. They also have a presentation that they're going to share just so that you can get to know a little bit more about NC Protection Group and what they do and what they are willing to offer for our school system. So we have Gary Pastor with us today, David Dodge, and then Earl Phipps.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity.
Red means go.
All right. My name is Gary Pastor. I'm the owner and founder of the North Carolina Protection Group. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and share our resources with you. I started in the United States Marine Corps when I was 18, security forces. I went into law enforcement when I got out of that, spent four years with the Greenville Police Department. And I started a company when I was 27 years old, which I know is a long time ago now, but offering everything from investigations to security to bodyguard services and everything in between. We're honored to be here and honored to share with you the type of services that we can assist with.
So we have a brief presentation to show you, then we'll answer any questions you have.
Schools are the place that we send our most pride to them. So my wife was an educator for 30 years. She spent 20 years teaching special education and then she spent 10 years at a private Catholic school teaching. I've got a 17-year-old son who went to those schools. I am very in tune with the needs without a doubt. Today I bring with me Dave Dodge, who's the Vice President and Operations Manager for our company, and Earl Phipps, who is our Regional Director in this area. Both Dave and Earl are former police officers with many years of experience in these fields. So, following along with the slideshow. Some of the stuff that we're looking to do is assist with particular schools. Like you talked about, there are schools that are outlying, there are schools that might not have a school resource officer readily available, that don't have anybody within a couple of moments' notice. That's where we're looking to fill that gap. Law enforcement across the board is extremely shorthanded right now. It doesn't matter what department you go to, there's less and less people getting involved. And it's unfortunate, but it's an opportunity for us to step in and offer a professional service to help fill that gap. Got the clicker.
Just really quick to emphasize, we are very safe here. In Moore County Schools, the police do a very good job of making sure that that happens, the staff. This is just an enhancement to make sure that we're doing that next level. So I want to make that clear. When we're talking about stats here in a minute, we're talking about in general, the reports that are coming from the state. But I want you to know, your staff here is doing an amazing job and staying proactive and trying to keep this a safe environment. I was the Chief of Police of Pinehurst for years before I retired here. I have my grandchildren in West End Elementary. I have a vested interest in making sure this is what it needs to be. So I just wanted to make sure that when we're talking about these stats, we understand the stats here. We're living them just like you are and we're thankful for what you guys do.
So, a lot of areas report that crime is down in the school systems. There's many different reasons that they, that they would do that, right? Hopefully, that's the case. However, when you really look at the assaults on teachers and the violent crimes that are taking place in school systems, they're on the increase. And it's unfortunate. Last week, we saw a terrible tragedy up north and it's just almost unthinkable, some of the things that are happening. And we have to be that next step of protection. Again, like Earl said, your school system is taking a proactive approach. There are very few, y'all know this, there are very few people or school systems that have their own law enforcement agency. It's almost unheard of. It's probably a blessing and a curse at the same time. Some of the, yeah, I understand, some of the liability, I understand. So as your system is in place and doing a wonderful job, we still can't recruit enough people to fill those positions. It's a number of schools that are constantly dealing with issues. There's more, some schools that are more prone to issues. Again, our job is to find the right personnel to fit in the right spaces, the right pegs and the right holes to fill those gaps. Little bit about us, again, we've been in business for 26 years. I started the company and I've been very fortunate to have the quality staff that I have surrounding us. We are about 160 employees right now and quickly growing, offering security services to Fortune 5 companies, the number one YouTuber in the world, and many others. We take this job extremely serious and that's why we have four former chiefs of police just on staff, former SWAT team members, former educators, people that have done this for years. for a living, and understand the importance.
My name is Kara Valli, I'm the human resources director for NC Protection Group, Privatize, NCVSS. I'm also a private investigator with Privatize, and executive protection specialist with North Carolina Protection Group. I graduated from NC State University with a degree in terminology, and from there I went to the work process office for two years. So we have written down a work of our department for almost eight years, decided to get out of law enforcement, and then moved to the private security sector. And that's why I can be in contact with Gary and my wife. One thing I love about working with NC Protection Group and Privatize is the family feel that goes off, we're very tight-knit with the people. It's also people to rely on, you can be a good fellow representative, we all come with different specialties. One thing about Gary is that he invested his company, he invested the business, he invested his career. He sends all of us to an IBA executive protection force out in Miami, which is one of the best in the industry. With resources like this, we're able to provide our clients the best services possible.
Kara is our head of human resources, and in charge of bringing all our quality folks on board, along with two assistants that she has.
My name is Dave Dodge. I am the operations manager for NC Protection Group, and I'm also a private investigator in Privatize Incorporated. I started with this company in July of 2021, came on board. Gary Pastor was looking for someone to run a security detail here in the Raleigh area, so I came on board and started that with him, and I've been with the company since. Currently have an office here in Durham, North Carolina area, and running day-to-day operations. I originally am from Michigan, Battle Creek, Michigan, specifically the syrup city. Moved down to Raleigh, North Carolina in 2008, started out in the Raleigh Police Department. Started there as a patrol officer, and worked in North Raleigh in 2008, after 2021, when I left from here. A company of this size of 120, 130, 140, 150, and up, you're dealing with a walk of life, you're dealing with people from all kinds of backgrounds, with all kinds of situations, much like what I've dealt with in this company. I am basically overwatch for the security side of the house, so that you can put any pay dollars together, send Gary the payroll. It could be networking with potential clients, doing site visits. I like not having my hand held. That's what I love about this company, is that Gary, the owner, gives you a task, he doesn't tell you necessarily how to do it. We're not the large mega corporation where you're never going to see your point of contact with the site, you might never see your manager. With this company, you're only going to get the best professional services. Honesty, no one's going to sell you a story that is true, we're not salespeople, we are as much a part of the onsite and working with our team and officers, supervised and up, you're not going to get that with another company. I can promise you that, and I'll be the one to shake your hand, I'm here for me, and I'll be the one to talk to you about the contract. Our team rises within the ranks of this company. So everyone, for the most part, on this team, has done everything from wearing a uniform and being on a post somewhere, on up, through supervising the business. So they know the company, they know the inner workings. I know that if Gary has anything to say about this company, it's never going to stop, it's going to continue to grow, more given the opportunity to succeed, it's completely up to you, and we would give them everything to succeed, and it's simply a choice, we're out of control.
All right, so we, again, we established the business in 1999. You are surrounded, not just today, but our companies will help surround you with quality professionals, people that are, we've got one guy that's a retired LA County SWAT member, we've got four former chiefs of police, tons of former law enforcement officers. The positions that we are already considering for staffing with your system are all former police officers with experience in school resource. That's, that's the goal, getting people that are qualified and ready to begin work immediately that have that experience. The commitment and dedication, I own the company, and I'm sitting here in front of you. I don't know if y'all have ever heard of like Allied Universal, or any of these larger companies, have you ever met the owners? There's a big difference between the way we do things and the way other companies do it. I want to treat every client like it's our own, like it's our family member, like my kids go to school here. That's the way we handle everything. So what's the benefits to partnering with a team like ours? Cost-effective solution to help supplement law enforcement. When we say cost-effective, as running a business for the past 26 years, I understand how much things cost. I understand health insurance, liability insurance, workers' comp, uniforms, training, all of the things that go into it, and when you outsource, you can save a lot on that end of the spectrum. So helping supplement that is important. Immediate solution to some of the issues, you're going to have an immediate fix, somebody standing out there, smiling and waving as folks are coming in in the morning, and making sure that the doors are properly locked and everything is safe at those locations. That's an immediate response. So you don't have to wait for something to develop, we don't have to develop a program, you already have it, we just need to continue to expand on that. There's going to be seamless integration with the police department. We have our own radio communication center, and when I say that, any place in the country, we have radio communication with our dispatch center in Durham, North Carolina, which is manned 24 hours a day. That radio communication would contact the police department in case of an emergency. You never have to worry about downtime of something happened and somebody wasn't notified, because our guards pick up the radio, they call dispatch, dispatch contacts the police department, and the police department handles and helps with that response. So seamless. We do threat assessments, so with any location that we go into to do security work, one of the first things that we'll do is an assessment of the property. What doors are open, what doors are closed, how many points of entry do we have? Do we have proper camera angles, are the bushes too tall? Do you have proper lighting in the parking lot? Simple things like that, that don't necessarily cost anything, but we can help give that back as another added avenue of protection. That's where a lot of people miss it. And then scalability for future growth. With our communication center, we also have camera monitoring, we have metal detectors, we have investigators that do investigations. Almost anything that you can think of, we have the resources to handle. So our, our security guards assist with not just the school functions throughout the day, wherever is needed, but can also be here for special events. Again, we'll do security consulting and come in and figure out the vulnerabilities and the risk to help mitigate those and put together a plan. Yep. We have emergency response planning that will help put together as far as evacuation plans and such, if those are not currently in place. And you have physical security upgrades, like doors, windows, and such, that we will suggest. One of the benefits of working with our team is we have a program already in place that we partner with, it's called Project Guardian. Project Guardian is a nonprofit organization that, for free, will come in and do an assessment of your location. And when they do that, we'll take photographs, figure out what's needed, we take all that data, and we send it off to the Department of Homeland Security. DHS and CISA then puts together their overview and their suggestions for target hardening. They send it back, it's not our report, it's their official report. When they do that, because it's their report, now you're eligible for all types of federal funding to follow up on their recommendations. So we've already thought about that and already used that in other locations. So there could be some free upgrades. In life, even in law enforcement, everything is reactive. We can't have a reactive response. If we react, it's too late. We need that proactive approach, and that's what makes you different, is you all are taking a proactive approach to avoid issues before, hopefully, they ever take place. If they do take place, how will they be handled professionally, correctly, and within your policies and procedures? We want to mitigate that risk by making sure that we have the proper doors locked and entrances and exits. Professionalism and experience of our team is above and beyond anybody else's, and I can say that with confidence. I surround myself with other professionals that have just as much experience as I do or more. That's what makes us better. Your peace of mind when you send your child to school, or you send your facilities, your staff to school, you should never have to worry about it. You should never have to worry about whether or not my child will come home safe, whether or not my wife or husband will come home safe after teaching. That should not ever be a question. It wasn't a question when I was younger, it's sad that it is where it is today. We want to put together some cost-effective savings plans for you, like we talked about, simple stuff like SEPTED, crime prevention through environmental design. How do we trim back the bushes to make it less vulnerable? How do we maybe set up a solar light that costs $3 instead of spending thousands of dollars on a light pole and lights? What are the things that we can do to save money, affect a change, and have it almost immediate? That's what we want to do. And then again, it talks about our assessment program as well. I'm probably not an easy person to work with. I don't say that anybody works for me, everybody works with me. I'm probably not an easy person to work with because I demand the best out of every individual, and if they're here working for you, they're going to do it the way that I would do it, or don't do it at all. And I can't stress that enough, and poor Dave takes the brunt of that a lot of times when I tell him, tell him to deal with an issue. But again, we want to take that proactive approach, we want to work together. These folks are retired law enforcement officers, retired school resource officers, retired school teachers. Those are the people that we're going to have working with your team. And when we need it, there's state-of-the-art changes that can be made. We have a camera monitoring center that's monitored 24 hours a day, that we could put up, everybody's seen those parking lot cameras in the Walmart with the solar panels, we have that capability, with our own monitoring center and our own response team. So all of that's already in place, we're here for you if you need those. The most important thing here is relationships. I'm not going to candy coat anything, I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie to you, I'm not going to tell you something that's not true. We are here to work with you because your families and your facilities and your staff deserve it. We want a positive learning environment for the kids, we want to, what I envision is when a, when a child gets out of the car in the morning, that there's officer-friendly, standing there waving, smiling and waving, helping the kids into the building, making sure that everybody's safe, traffic's flowing, that the kids are in the building, the doors are locked down, the facility is a safe environment, that if there is an issue, that we can respond to that quickly, efficiently, with a proper backup coming. We're, we have to do this together, it's not going to happen on its own. Again, a little bit, a little bit about us, you can go to NCProtectionGroup.com, check out our website if you'd like. I'm here to answer any questions, but most of all, I thank you for the opportunity to be here and share with you our vision, the types of things that we do for other clients, and what we hope to do for you.
Thank you very much. Any, did Officer Gooch want to say anything?
Yeah, you got two, all right.
We talked about this before, and I'm definitely all on board with what Gary Pastor can provide for us. We do got schools in areas where there's no, I mean, every, every school's assigned an officer, but the officer may be too far away to respond right away, and being that stuff happened in middle school and high school very often, they spend a lot of time at those locations, and it kind of, I think the elementary school kind of gets overlooked sometimes. So if they can help in that area, that would be, that's, that's, that's our goal, we're trying to make the staff, students, and, and parents and everybody feel comfortable in the, in the elementary school environment, so, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Pastor and your colleagues, for being here today. Are there any questions or comments from our board members? All right, Mr. Benway, or Ms. Bruno, you want to start?
Okay. I'll start. Okay, first of all, welcome, Gary Semperfy, we're very happy you're here. And Dave and Earl, excellent, excellent presentation. I have a couple, and I do want to say that isn't this awful, that this is the world we live in, it's just heartbreaking. Okay, you said you're unarmed, give me your reasons for that.
State guidelines. The state of North Carolina says that you cannot carry a weapon on school property unless you're a sworn law enforcement officer.
Don't you guys?
Unless you're a sworn law enforcement officer.
Oh, okay, okay, I understand.
And they make an exception for some HR 218 holders, which is the, it's a retired police officer that can carry their weapon for their own personal protection.
Yes.
They can carry on school property. But there is legislation right now, I'm, I'm very involved with the state of North Carolina and the law process, so there is legislation right now that may change that come January, we'll just have to wait and see how it pans out.
Okay. Because that, that kind of bothers me that you're, you're unarmed. The other thing, do you wear a uniform?
Yes. And our uniform for your system will be designed specifically for your needs and wants. So where many of our guards are wearing a full Class A style, like a fancier style, law enforcement style, uniform, it just depends on the location. Where, if you're talking about elementary schools, that might be too much for kids. Kids might not feel as comfortable, they might rather see someone in a nice pair of slacks and a polo shirt.
Hmm, that doesn't give the respect. I have to disagree with you with that.
Again, it's whatever you design, it's whatever y'all decide, that's what we can go with. The state has some requirements, if we go with a dress uniform, that it has to have certain things, but once we get to a polo level, or a sports coat, or something like that, then we, we have more room to wiggle a little bit. So whatever you want, that's what we're here to do.
Okay. You do offer a whole lot more than just protection with all the advice, with everything that you, you have. I, I was very, very impressed with this. I do have a question for you, though, Tim. You mentioned the schools, how did you pick the schools and why is Cranes Creek not on here?
Cranes Creek's assigned an officer currently, police officer currently.
Well, if any of our schools, they're the ones who need more.
I would, I would say that all our schools need security personnel and our police officers, I wouldn't say Cranes Creek is any more or less of that, respectfully, but these schools were chosen based on the fact that there aren't currently officers assigned to them, they're outside municipalities, and as Chief Gooch noted, although all these schools have officers assigned, many times they're being shared with middle and high school officers. So this allows us to have a full-time personnel, security officer on site, as been noted, patrolling and keeping that school as safe as possible.
Okay, well, I, I disagree with your assessment, but if you need more help at a, at another school, are you able to, to move back and forth?
This would allow us, if we felt we did need additional security personnel at a school, this would allow us to do that, yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Where are we in this process? Do we have a statement of work drawn up? Where are we in the procurement?
We have a contract ready for your approval that would assign security officers at the schools that have been noted on here. It would be paid out of, basically, the vacancies we're currently holding in the budget for school police. And it allows for flexibility, if we were to be able to hire full-time police officers, it allows for flexibility in how many of the security personnel we have, et cetera.
So we do have a statement of work, then?
Yes, sir, it's attached to the executive sum, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Dr. Dahl?
I think I heard you say this, but I wouldn't mind if you'd repeat it in response to this question. Would you anticipate that an officer would be assigned to a school, and as long as the districts did not need to shuffle people around, that the, the one person would stay at that school and be developing relationships with staff and students at that school?
Absolutely, that is the goal. The goal is to build relationships, and the way you do that is have consistent faces at the locations and build those relationships with the students and the staff and the parents and everybody else. The supervisory position, the supervisor that drives around, checks on all the locations, and he's the liaison, should somebody be out sick, or should somebody need a day off, that officer will- Should somebody be out sick, or should somebody need a day off, that officer will fill in as necessary.
And I wondered if you and possibly interim chief Gooch could say a little about what the interface between you and Moore County Schools Police would look like, right? Somebody's got to be in charge and making the decisions, right? So how does that work?
We're all pointing the finger.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
We are here to supplement. We are here to assist. And the police department is in charge, and we are here to assist them with anything that they need. The communication aspect has always been a difficult part in any agency when you have multiple pieces to the puzzle. And how do we communicate? And how do we know who's, who's steering the ship? This is his ship. We are just here to continue to paddle, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
So what do you think about it, since you, since she brought up the chain of command? What do you think about a chain of command where your security officer supervisor reports to the district chief, but your officer, your security agents that you have at the schools report to the principal? Isn't that kind of a bizarre?
Yeah, Mr. Hensley, let's stick to the topic. Let's stick to the topic.
No, that is the topic. I'm talking about the contract.
Okay.
It's written in the contract that the, that the security guards at the elementary schools report to the principal. And, but, but they're also hiring a security officer supervisor, which is an additional position who reports to the, did you read the contract?
No, not yet. I have not.
Oh, okay.
But I'll pull it up. So go ahead with your question.
So it's really a follow-on to Ms. Dahl's question. What do you think, that's kind of a bizarre chain of command where you're, where you have a officer supervisor who, you know, your people, I guess, would report to, but in the statement of work, they report to the principal.
Not an unusual situation at all, actually. We have many other clients that there is a president of the company, a vice president of the company, a security director, and it's just, it's what we call a chain of command. So when we are on site and something takes place, we are there to assist that principal. When things need to be reported or need to be handled, again, it's shared with that chief of police, and the chief of police will make the security decision based on their communication with the principal.
Okay. I'll hold the rest of my questions till I have the floor. That was just a follow-up to her question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Well, just a quick follow-up. So other school systems, that was my main question. What other school systems in North Carolina have you worked within before?
So school systems, as in putting a, a security guard in a school, you're our first. Yep, absolutely. We do work with D.H. Conley High School in Pitt County. We work with four, four different schools in Pitt County right now, handling football games, basketball games, some administrative stuff. And we have proposals in front of two other private schools at the moment that are considering our services as well. This is, this is a pilot program. But I can promise you that it is not new territory by any means.
Right. And you had said that the folks that you have in mind were folks that had experience in schools?
Correct.
Either former SROs or?
I can speak to that a little bit. I've been reviewing applications in lieu of to kind of get ahead of the curve a little bit. And some of our resumes, we have folks who are prior law enforcement with decades of experience. We have folks who are school resource, security folks in other areas that, that have moved down this way, that have decades of experience from monitoring cameras to taking care of admissions of kids, security of the buildings, any of, any of those things. There's an array of special backgrounds that, that we've gone through to make sure that we put the right folks even into the characteristics of each school, because every school has its own set of dynamics. And you need to make sure you put the right person into that school system so that they're gelling with everybody and they're not creating problems, trying to fix problems or get ahead of problems.
Right.
So all of that's a part of their resumes. And I've looked at all of them so far.
Okay.
And if they don't cut it, they, you won't see them.
And that was my, that was my other thought as you guys were presenting, that our schools have done a lot of work around security and team-based, you know, what it looks like site by site. And so that would be my other, just ensuring that that, all that work is complemented seamlessly with this would be my other thing. Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
I guess I wanted to echo Ms. Bruno. And I understand that you guys are not armed and are not able to be. But what's your highest level of protection that you legally can provide, should an altercation or something take place on site while you're there? Is it only verbal to an outside source? Or could you handle a situation?
The state is very restrictive on security officers. It's basically a life-saving act that we could do. We cannot detain and move from one place to another. And that is consistent with an arrest, which we do not have arrest powers. So a majority of what we do is presence, and like Gary spoke on in the presentation, planning for those issues to occur and target hardening, which means you take measures to make it that much more inconvenient for anyone to even want to try, whatever that might be.
My second question, Dr. Locklear, I'll need a little help because we just recently voted on and started using our system, Syntejix. And you're familiar with Syntejix, maybe? My question would be, would you use our Syntejix communication device, or would you stick only to what you have for communication? And that, you may need to be educated on what I'm talking about before you even answer it. So I understand that as well. But that's a, a protocol we put in place that we're putting a lot, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I share. Thank you. Yes, we implemented the Syntejix wearable, you know, emergency alert buttons, panic buttons that allow us to alert instantly on emergency situations, whether that's medical or need help now is three presses. And we're able to get help and that exact location is mapped, et cetera. The strobes you see around our buildings, et cetera, alert to that. And then if it's, unfortunately, we need to, there's a, a violent situation, situation, we need to lock down the building, our staff, and this is any staff, itinerant, outside, inside, can use that badge to alert the need to lock down the building. And that happens immediately. Screens are taken over, announcements are made, et cetera. And so we certainly, if we do go under, the board does approve this contract, certainly can work to see how we, you know, also partner with you. So your officers would have that. I think we would want you to.
Absolutely. I can see that as a, a great supplement to have both our radio communication with our command center that communicates directly with law enforcement, and then still have that capability of when an alert does go off, that our command center gets an immediate alert, make sure that they're communicating with the right people. So just making, making sure that we put together the right procedure and protocol for that is, is vital.
I jotted down a few, a page of notes, if I could read my own handwriting. First, why is Southern Pines Elementary on this list? All the other ones are remote schools, that police departments. The criteria you stated were remote schools, police officers not available, but like the Southern Pines Police Department's like down the street from Southern Pines Elementary. How did Southern Pines Elementary make this list?
Well, it, it don't necessarily have to be Southern Pines Elementary. But one of the reasons we did that is because we were going to put one at Westmore and one at High Falls. And I already have officers that cover both of those schools. So we just moved one to make High Falls the primary for the security company. And we had to move the other one somewhere. We just chose Southern Pines, but it don't necessarily have to be Southern Pines.
Okay. I just thought there was a particular reason. Needless to say, and for reasons I'm going to articulate, I could not be more opposed to this. No offense to you guys. I mean, you look like a very professional company. But the fact of the matter is, if we didn't have our own police force, we wouldn't be in this issue. If you go to Lee County, where the sheriff's office provides the SROs, they have SROs in every single school, I believe. And I think you're going to find that's true. You know, as I've said a million times, maybe that's a bit of an exaggeration, I have 115 school districts in North Carolina. We are one of two who have our own police force. And I think if you talk to the surrounding counties, if you talk to the chairs of the school boards, I think you'll find that the surround, the counties surrounding us have professional law enforcement officers at every single one of their schools, provided either by their sheriff's department or the local chief law enforcement officer. So our refusal to give up our police force is really what's causing this. So we keep putting Band-Aids on problems, keep putting Band-Aids on the problems, and you keep applying fixes and fixes and fixes, rather than just addressing the root core. And that is, we, we shouldn't, you know, having our own police force is a distraction from our mission. We do a very poor job. As we know, there was like a five-year period where none of our officers had active shooter training. That's because it's not a superintendent's job to run a police force. We have officers who've attended the FBI National Academy, and we have professional law, we have 11 sworn departments in this county, right? All of them, you know, are, anyway, I digress. The second thing is, and these are the two wave top issues, then I'm going to fill in, people lose sight of the fact that the, the prime, and unfortunately, this was reinforced just last week, the reason why schools have school resource officers, their primary number-one mission is to stop active shooters. You know, SROs came into being after the Stockton shooting in California in the mid-'90s, and then they gained traction after the shooting in Colorado, Columbine. So the primary function of a school resource officer is to stop an active shooter. And unfortunately, statistics bear out that, I mean, they got this goofy definition, you know, they, they define a bunch of gang violence as active shooters. But if what's commonly known as an active shooter happens in this county, it's going to happen in a school. Therefore, and I've said this in this, in this forum many times, if Pinehurst Police Department has their own SRT team, as does Southern Pines Elementary, but the fact of the matter is, the people who most need to be trained to respond to an active shooter are the school resource officers. And we're going to end up with unarmed security guards, right? So they can't even do the primary responsibility. I get all the things that they can do, but they cannot stop an active shooter. They can report it. So anyway, let me, let me go, let me go down my list of things that I, that I, I put down. And then I'm going to have what I think this board, being a contempl, then I'll conclude in what actions I think this board should take on to, to move forward. So one is, by their own admission, they haven't done this with any other school district. You have to ask yourself why, out of 115 school districts, why we're the one that has this need? I go back to the fact that we have our own SROs, and the fact that if we didn't have our SROs and they're being provided by the sheriff, they would be equally trained, and we would have one for every school. The mission of an active shooter, of a SROs, is to stop an active shooter. Which leads me to my next point is, you know, obviously, there's concern about student-on-student violence and student-on-faculty violence. As a board, we've taken huge strides to address much of that in the last couple of years, to the extent that it still exists. What we need to do is we need to start expelling students who do student-on-student violence or student-on-faculty violence. We don't need to add more security. We don't need to add armed guards. We need, excuse me. Oh. We don't need, we don't need to add more armed guards. And as I said, in oddly enough, I believe, last month, we don't need to run our schools more like a prison. We need to, you know, we need to deal with the chronic violators and get them out of our community. The interesting thing about this is, for years, I've advocated returning the SROs back to the sheriff's office. And for five years I've been on this board, I've been told, oh, my gosh, no, no, SROs have to have special training. They have to do this. They have to do that. Setting aside the fact for a moment that SROs provided by the, that the sheriff's department provides to Lee County are fully trained in all the things that SROs need to be trained in. They're just a special division within the sheriff's department. Setting that aside for a minute, let's look at the contractual requirements. That's what I was looking at on my phone. Let's look at the contractual requirements of, of these security people. It's a, it's Appendix B. High school diploma or GED, okay. Prior experience in security LE or related fields preferred, that means optional, not required, past background check, driver's license, may be required to attend a 16-hour course to get certified, strong communication skills, ability to follow instructions, there's a good one, ability to stand for long periods and lift 50 pounds. That's it. So we went from, we went from, I've been told for five years that SROs have to have this special training. They have to, you know, understand students and this and that, to must have a high school diploma or GED, and maybe some experience preferred. That's what that contract says. I can skip that. Oh, by the way, never mind, we'll cover that. So here's my, here's my recommendation. See, we went from nothing. In fact, a question was asked last, just last month, just last month, Ms. Bruno asked bluntly, may I, you know, if I could say it, are we considering private security for our schools? And a very reluctant, yes, we're looking into it. And then a month later, here we go. And, you know, it's in, it's in, it's sprung on us on Friday. We're discussing it today, and we're going to vote on it next week. That is not a deliberative body. That is not a deliberate body that uses this experience and judgment to give guidance to the superintendent. We don't even have a chief of police, right? We do not even, we have an interim chief of police. And that is because I've been, I've been, it's not because, I've said for two months, ever since that position has become vacant, I, I recommended to the superintendent that we have on the work session, us as a board, we need to sit down and talk about what we think the role of the SROs are, what their mission is, and that we need to, as a school board, do we want the SROs or not? We need to discuss and debate that. Okay? If we have them, are they like snake-eating SRT-trained people who can stop an active shooter, who are trained and equipped? I refer back, so Moore County School Police, five years, no active shooter training, even though the facility for active shooter training for North Carolina is in Moore County at Sammerson, Moore County School Police didn't bother to send their officers to active shooting training for five years, until I discovered it. Then I discovered that Moore County School Police never had trauma medical training and were never issued trauma medical kits, right? That's what you get when you get a police department that's run by, no offense, but, you know, academics who are not professional law enforcement administrators. Then we get the money, then we have a joint meeting with the county commissioners, and the county commissioners say, yeah, we'll fund additional positions, and we'll fund all the equipment, and we'll fund all the equipment for the existing officers. And that is plates, plates, plate carriers, rifles, shields, all the stuff that a person needs if they're going to charge into gunfire, because that's the person that's there, right? Two years later, two years from the time that the, that the county commissioner said, yes, there's, there's additional money. It took two years to buy all that equipment. And I volunteered to donate a bunch of it. If people just told me what we wanted, I would have gone to my vendors and got like some of the best body armor in the world donated. But the fact of the matter is, Moore County Schools pays lip service to this, right? So my position on SROs are, look, we are the, there are 11 sworn departments in Moore County, 11. We are the third highest paid. And, and we're also, you know, our SROs, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Anyway, so the road ahead, look, we should not vote on this. This is a Band-Aid. This is rearranging the, the chairs on the deck of the Titanic. What we need to do is, we need to look at the departments in Moore County, and we need to see, do they really have the vacancies that the superintendent claims they do? I don't think it's as hard to recruit officers now as it was a couple of years ago. We need to study the surrounding counties- We need to study the surrounding counties. And I think we'll find all the school districts where the SROs belong, the sheriff's department, they have SROs, sworn law enforcement in all their schools. And then, we need to revisit the mission and path of our police department. We're putting the cart before the horse on this one.
Madam Chair, can I offer some clarity? You are not going to find school districts across the state to have every school covered. You're not. Lee County themselves are struggling with that. So, you know, you're just not going to find that. I would say, Madam Chair and board members, that we, as a school district, are forward-thinking in looking to do this, in looking to ensure we have trained security personnel monitoring our schools, monitoring our elementary schools, where we're unable to have full-time school police there at this time, but we're going to continue to strive to do that. I would say, as a school district, we're forward-thinking in doing that. And we're not putting a cart before the horse. And you hire me as superintendent to bring you these recommendations. And when I was asked that question, I said, yes, we've been looking at that and researching that, and we plan to bring a board recommendation on that in the near future. So, I didn't sheepishly respond to that. I very transparently responded to the work we've been doing behind the scenes, because it's my job as superintendent to do our very best to make sure we have safe and secure schools to our standpoint possible, which is why we've done a lot of, we've done safety assessments of our facilities, while we've looked at hardening our exteriors, while we've looked at bringing in the strategic system, to do everything in our power to be as proactive as we possibly can as a school district, because that's what this board has asked me to do. So, that's what I, why we brought this recommendation to the board, stand behind it. I believe we need to, I would strongly recommend that the board move forward, and that we get these security personnel in place as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Locklear, thank you for your comments, Mr. Hensley. I agree that this is a proactive measure, and whatever we can do to protect our students, that's the bottom line, and we need to do it immediately. Are we perfect? You know, we do our very best to be perfect. But the more experienced people we have in our schools that are outliers and we can't monitor quite as well, then I feel like that's the bottom line. You know, I want to protect all of our schools. So, thank you so much for coming, for sharing your expertise and making this an opportunity for us. I think it's a good use of our funds that we have available right now, that we don't have. Our, you know, we can't find folks to fill our vacancies. So, instead of letting that money just sit there and not be used, let's use it to protect our children the best to our ability. All right, so.
So, Madam Chair, second round of comments.
Okay, 10 minutes or less, please, because we've got a long day.
So, the chair of the Lee County School Board tells me differently, so I'll get clarification on whether or not they have SROs.
What's his or her name, if you don't mind? Do you remember the chair's name?
I'm drawing a blank. I can't remember. You know her. I know, we can't remember her name. Womack, Sherri Womack.
Okay, all right, I'll give her a call, too.
So, now, look, again, I'm going to vote against this for the reasons I discussed. But we need to, I'm going to be in Eastern Europe during the next work session, but the next business meeting, I'll be back. And I think that we need to, I want to add it to the agenda, a strategic discussion of the future of the Moore County School Police. And I will send you guys a brief, I almost did it for this meeting, but I didn't hit the seven-day rule. I'll hit the seven-day rule. I think the meeting's on the 13th. And let's have an agenda item, a discussion on the strategic direction of the Moore County School Police. And then, what I would ask is, we have that discussion, and then the central office can go and get some factual information of surrounding counties. But I'm here to tell you that the reason why we need these people, apparently, is be, the reason why we apparently need these people is because we have our own police force. If we didn't have our own police force, we wouldn't have the staffing issues. And then, secondly, if we, well, I have the floor, but go ahead and butt in. And the second, and the second thing is, if we're going to retain our police department, the way you do that, and I've outlined this before, unfortunately, Chair Levy blocked me, this is the infamous brief that he blocked me from giving, that I'll just give on the 13th. But what you do is, every single one of our, what we do is, we grandfather existing SROs. Our pay right now is third. So, out of the 11 departments, sworn departments in Moore County, we are third. Pinehurst and Southern Pines is above us. And we still have problems getting people, in spite of the fact that our officers aren't, you know, raiding crack houses and pulling people over the side of the road at 3:00 in the morning. And it's pretty, it's different duty, but it's, you know, compared to what a lot of officers do, shift work and all, it's, you know, it's just not that, I don't know how to put it, but it's just not as demanding duty as the other ones. So, what we do, but at the same time, we need to be the most prepared to stop active shooters. So, here's what you do. We're already, our pay's already within 15% of the top pay, 15%, 20%. Then, what you do is, you put in proficiency pay, and you only hire officers who are SRT-qualified and who are trauma medical qualified. And then, you require them to train once a month or twice a month with the SRT teams who would be responding to their school. And those officers that have that qualification and do that, then you offer them 30% proficiency pay. And then, they would, or whatever, then they would be the highest-paid officers in the county. But you know what? They would be the best-trained officers in the county, too. And the reason why Moore County Schools cannot recruit officers is because most of the people who go into law enforcement, they want the challenge, or like people who go in the military, it's like people who volunteer for the Special Forces or recon or whatnot. If you raise the standards, then people will flock to Moore County Schools Police. And that's what we need. We need the best-trained, the best-equipped, and the most professional department capable of responding to an active shooter. And again, you raise the standards, you do that, and officers will flock here. Been saying it for years. And oddly, Moore County Schools has thrown money at it, thrown money at it, not changed the standards, thrown money at it, thrown money. They've been doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. They've done everything except try the plan that I just lined out. And I guarantee you, it will work. I guarantee you it will work, because I know a lot of the officers around here, and I know it will work. So, we'll have that discussion on the 13th, I think it's the 13th.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Doll. Oh, no, it's okay. I don't think we need to.
I'm sorry, October 13th, I misspoke.
Is my colleague finished? I happen to disagree with my colleague about a number of things which are off-topic for this. I hope that most here would agree that we are not going to reinvent Moore County Schools Police within the academic year that has already begun. And just, I want to point out one thing in the comment that I think is relevant to the question of whether we need additional time to deliberate about going forward with this. And that is that Moore County Schools can end the contract with 20 days' notice at any time. So, I would say, you know, just, I used to be into sports cars, and we used to say that you want to have balance between the power and the braking system. So, here, my analogy is, maybe there can be a balance between the amount of time needed to deliberate on this and the ease with which we could terminate it if we felt that it turned out not to be the right choice for some unforeseen reason. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Bruno?
I have one. I want to be absolutely clear. If we have a problem with a student, who does the, who does the SRO, who makes the final decision? Does the principal make the decision, or do you make the decision?
The principal administrators are going to make decisions from a school discipline perspective. Chief Gooch and the other officers, they make the law enforcement decision. So, the discipline decision, for example, suspending a student out of school for breaking the code of conduct, it's going, that decision is going to be made by the school administrator. The law enforcement charging a student for a crime is going to be, that decision's made by our school police.
Okay. Why does a principal have say over the chief?
They don't have say over the chief. We work in collaboration with our school police that are on campus. The school police are there to support the school, work in partnership with the principal. And the principal is a leader on that campus. So, you know, I would want our school police to work with them and talk with them and work with the overall vision for the school. But they don't, they're not evaluated by that principal. They're evaluated by the chief. But it's just a partnership. We've never really had, to my knowledge, never really had any issues with that chain of command.
Okay, I'm going to ask chief. I don't know if I meant a word this correctly, but I get really tired of people saying, well, he had a bad day today. He didn't have breakfast today. There's a million excuses why we're letting discipline go, and I really, really get tired of it. In cases like that, when a principal says to you, oh, let him go, oh, he's tired, he's this, he's that, what do you do?
I haven't had any encounter of a principal doing that.
You haven't?
I hadn't even heard that. But I do know they handle the disciplinary side, but we handle the criminal side. Now, we don't cross paths either way.
Well, I'm glad to hear you say that.
Yes, ma'am.
I really am. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bruno. Mr. Benway, oh, yes, sir, go ahead.
I think bottom line, we've got some homework to do. I think we still haven't defined the requirement adequately, and that requirement is threat-driven. We have not done an adequate threat assessment since 20 million people floated to America, unknowns. And you can bet your life, there are hundreds of thousands of operators amongst those folks that present a threat to a very lucrative place. You want to make a PSYOP hit, hit Moore County with all the tier-one folks and their sons and daughters and grandkids going to school in our schools. I kind of lean in the direction of Ms. Doll. I think we need some kind of an interim position to take on this thing. But we need to do some hard soul-searching and sit down and really nudge this out and define the requirements that would better shape their contract as a follow-on. It's probably going to take several sessions to sit down and work through this thing. And probably a task group, a special task group, to really put some time in on this. But we need to get this worked out. We've been arguing these points for the last three years that I've been here, and we really haven't come down to an adequate solution, in my view. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benway. Ms. Davis?
I was just going to add one thing.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Well, two things, now that Ken triggered a thought. I think these things can happen at the same time. I believe that getting more protection in our schools, while we have that conversation, I believe that that's important, to get more boots on the ground in our schools and then have that conversation. That's what I believe is the right course of action. I appreciate the idea of having that conversation, though, because being a new board member, this is something I haven't been in tune with as meticulously. And the only thing I would add is, the big question I have whenever we have that conversation in October is, let's get some analysis of the root of the hiring problem. Let's get some analysis about why are we having a hiring problem? It's obviously been a consistent thing. We've had raises several times, and I don't know the answer to that. And I would like to get more feedback from the field as to what are the causes and how can we purposefully address those resolutions?
It's, in response to Mr. Benway's comment about, you know, tier-one operators and stuff, I know several, maybe a handful, certainly three former tier-one guys who are deputies in surrounding counties or in here, who would, in a heartbeat, come and be SROs to protect their brother's dependents, right? But they don't want to be associated, you know, they're members of SRT teams, they're doing the tough-team thing, and they don't want to join Moore County Schools Police. I've talked to them, but if we raise the standard, we would recruit the people that we, you know, they would be honored to protect their, the children of their brothers that they served with. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Again, we thank you so much for your time and expertise and willingness to come and share with us today. Thank you for your time and your service. And again, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're at Item B. We'll slowly move to that direction, out-of-state field trips. Drive safely. All right, Dr. Locklear?
Yes, thank you. We have several out-of-state field trips that Dr. Capps is presenting today for the board's consideration. They do come with my recommendation for approval. Everything from an FFA trip to several wrestling in ROTC from Union Pines High School. So, Dr. Capps, I'll let you take over.
All right, good afternoon. So, there are five field trips. Pretty exciting time. So, the first one is with our FFA team at Northmore High School. As you will recall, they are first in the state. They are wanting to go to the national level and compete. So, they're asking to attend that at the end of October. Items two, three, and four all deal with the Union Pines High School wrestling team. They're trying to get ahead of the meets that they're already being invited to. So, the wrestling dual meet in Roanoke College, then the Southern Slam Wrestling Tournament in Taylor, South Carolina. And then, one that I'm kind of intrigued by is the Girls Beast of the East, where they're going to take five to six of our girl wrestlers to a competition there in December. And that's in Delaware. The last one, this one's hot off the press. They were just invited to this. That's the JROTC at Union Pines High School. They've been invited to attend the National Orienting Meet in Blacksburg, South Carolina. So, those are the five that I'd like you just to take a peek at, and let me know if you have any questions.
All right, any questions?
Glad the ROTC got in under the wire so that we could consider it. It looks really exciting.
It does. It does.
Thank you very much. All right, we are moving on to Item C, first reading of new and revised policies. Dr. Locklear stepped out, but Mr. Schwartz, it'll give you a chance to move up. And we'll, Dr. Patterson, we'll just turn it over to you, ma'am, whenever you're ready. Here it comes. No, you're okay. I knew what you would say, Dr. Patterson.
Go ahead, Dr. Patterson. Yes, these are policies for first read.
Okay, we start with Policy 3400, Evaluation of Student Progress. This is recommended for first reading from our policy committee. If you'll note the changes on Page 1 and 2.
I have a question on this one. There was some controversy on this FF. Could you scroll back up, please? Go on up, go on up a little bit more. Okay, hold on, right there. Yeah, no, no, no. So, I just want to cover this. So, an A is 90 to 100, so that's all the traditional 60 to 69, okay? Got that. And now, we have these FF letter grades.
It's driven by state board policy, is that correct, Rich?
Pardon me?
These changes are driven by state board policy?
Yeah, there's, there, um, let me just, um, uh, wait, jump in on this, if I may. Um, last November, I wanna say, um, the State Board of Education revised its policy on this, and there had been no definition of what an FF was prior to that time. And so, um, uh, yeah, the November seventh State Board of Education meeting last year, um, the State Board added the definition for FF, um, which was that, uh, they said "may only be used for a student who does not have a passing grade based on content and also has significant absences based on local board policy." So, the, um, definition that you see there for the FF is the local board policy definition of significant absences, and that's consistent with the Policy Listing Service recommendation from the North Carolina School Boards Association. At the August meeting of the State Board of Education just last month, um, there were additional recommendations made for the State Board of Education policy, um, which is GRAD09, and, um, they decided that they were gonna defer any action on that and refine the changes in that State Board policy and bring it up again at the September board meeting. When I checked this morning for the agenda, the September State Board meeting is tomorrow and Thursday, um, when I checked their agenda, um, on that, there's no additional item listed on this. So, they haven't come back with anything that they said they were going to come back with at the September board meeting. I think the changes that they were talking about making are to other sections of that policy, but one of the changes that they had recommended at the, um, August board meeting was to this FF definition, and they wanted to add another sentence just to clarify and say, "A student may not fail a course based solely on attendance." Okay? Now, this policy would cover that because it says it can only be used for a student who does not have a passing grade based on content and has also been absent for ten percent or more of classes over the course. But the State Board, that change to the State Board policy that was recommended in August was, I think, just for clarification, uh, to make abundantly clear that you can't fail a student based solely on attendance. There's some pushback from some places saying, "Look, attendance is, um, you know, something that, that you should consider as part of the grade." And there's an old, old, old Attorney General's opinion that goes back to the nineteen, late nineteen seventies, early nineteen eighties, that was written by Andy Vannori when he was Deputy Attorney General, that basically said that you, you can and should consider attendance as part of the grade because the benefits of attending class are you interact with, um, other students, you get to hear what's going on in the class, you get to hear questions and answers and explanations that you don't get if you're not in attendance at the, at the school setting. One of the flip sides of that now is that we have, um, uh, credit by demonstrated mastery, um, which reflects earning credit for a course through a credit for de, for demonstrated mastery where you don't even have to take a course or attend a class. So, we've got, you know, a lot of changes since late nineteen seventies, early nineteen eighties to now, um, but the State Board, um, said they were gonna consider this again at their September meeting. It doesn't look like they're going to. Um, I've got a couple of phone calls into some folks, um, at DPI to find out where that sits and what, where it stands. But where this is right now is okay, um, to meet the exist, the current policy and this portion of the recommended policy, if that change is made. What, uh, I would point out to you is that, once we make that change, we're gonna have to make a change in Board Policy 4400 dealing with attendance, um, and, um, uh, and 3400, Evaluation of Student Progress. So, those will need to go back to Policy Committee. But if you wanna go forward with this, it's, the, the FF is, is fine and it meets State Board current policy and it would be in compliance with the, that portion of this, uh, of the policy that was recommended in August.
All right, thank you. Ready? Okay. Next policy is 4407310, Student Staff Relations.
Dr. Patterson, have you just noticed you rolled through these, and these are as a result of State Board policy revisions or recommended by North Carolina School Board Association?
Yes, all six of these, and have, have been reviewed by Schwartz Law Firm as well.
If I missed that when I was out of the room, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't say it out loud, I should have. Okay.
Make sure and show everybody that, uh, that's the modifier in the top six.
That's a different policy.
On page three, you see one change, and then on page four, and that's Policy 4407310, Staff-Student Relations. Next policy is 4407312.
Can you just go back up so I can see all the changes?
I'm sorry, I, uh, can you go back to that previous one, please? Policy 4240, Child Abuse and Related Threats to Child Safety.
It's the next policy.
It's the next one.
Yep. These are all minor based on new State Board policy.
So, 42407312 is Child Abuse and Related Threats to Child Safety, and you will notice that same terminology on page three that you saw in the last policy we just reviewed. There's also a slight change on page four.
I think that's what Dr. Dahl was referring to earlier.
She's changing the wording, yeah. Next policy is 4342, Search and Seizure. This policy is actually revised with recommendation for Schwartz Law Firm, Law Firm, not North Carolina School Board Association, and that's, um, so that section B3 matches instead of drug dog, train dog.
And, uh, I, I would make one suggestion here, if you go to, um, page three, uh, right there, stop, thank you, uh, under the use of trained dogs, um, uh, on the third line there where it says canines to locate illegal materials, um, some of the drug dogs now, uh, well, the drug dogs now are sniffing out vapes, um, and some of those are illegal materials and some of them are prohibited materials in schools. So, we might wanna make a change there to add, uh, to locate illegal and then add or prohibited materials.
Do we need a motion to do that right now, to consider, or what?
I, I would suggest that we do that, yes.
Okay. So, let me get it in my sights.
It actually reads there twice because it mentions illegal materials in the last sentence, in the first sentence, it was in the last sentence.
Yes, that's correct, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, I would make a motion to amend policy, I don't have the number in front of me.
Four, 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 three, four, two.
Four, three, four, two, to add.
Add.
And.
Or prohibited.
This is in section.
And/or prohibited?
No, or prohibited, or prohibited, two places in section B3.
In two places in section B3.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose? Okay, yes. Okay, thank you.
All right. The next policy is 6330, Insurance for Student Transportation Services. Just the one page.
Okay, and the last one is 7130, Liscensure. And that's gonna be on page three and four. Thank you very much, Dr. Patterson.
In the second to the last one, yeah, I missed that one, that was like quick. The one-page one?
Insurance.
Have to have, in what instances will we have to have insurance and what, when will we not?
What this is adding is a requirement that if we lease or rent a vehicle, we'd still have to have insurance on it.
Except it says owned. I thought that if we had ins, I thought that we intentionally didn't have insurance.
No, it currently says school-owned vehicle. Now, we're saying a vehicle that's either owned, leased, or rented by the school system.
Right, so, I, I guess, I wanna know the practical app. I mean, I, I know what it says, but it says unless the vehicle's operating under the State Torque Claims Act.
Right.
So, are all of our vehicles, any of our vehicles operating under State Torque Claims Act?
Yes, our yellow buses and our maintenance vehicles are all covered under the State Torque Claims Act.
Okay, so, we're talking about activity buses?
Activity buses are not covered under the State Torque.
And then there might be some other miscellaneous vehicles?
And, and any other vehicles that we don't.
Okay, so, the yellow buses and our maintenance, so the state-provided things are covered by the State Torque Claims Act?
Right.
Is what we purchase locally, is that a fair statement?
Um, no, it's the purpose of the, for which it's used.
Okay.
So, may not, because we purchase one vehicle, but they're covered by the state. There are other things. We also have some vehicles, um, IT vehicles, probably Christian.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
What this is basically saying is if we own it or we lease it or we rent it, and it's not covered by the State Torque Claims Act, we have to have insurance on it, in a nutshell.
Speaking of buses, what are we running in place of the bus that was damaged the other day? We have a backup bus.
Thank you, Dr. Patterson. Speaking of buses.
Thank you, ma'am.
And one other thing, on the draft minutes?
Yes.
One suggested change in the second paragraph. Um, if you can pull that up. Dr. Dahl moved to go into closed session. It should say for the attorneys to provide legal advice.
Okay. You weren't providing legal advice?
Could I get in trouble for practicing law without a license?
So, I have, I, I have a question on the minutes. So, I had previously asked your committee to reconsider policy 2330, uh, that's the seven-day notice, uh, to provide briefs. Uh, I don't see where your, where your, uh, committee brought that up.
It's right there. The following policies that were reviewed and discussed included, uh, B is policy 2330.
Okay, and you took no action? Okay, all right, very good. Just didn't scroll down far enough.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Up to activity buses.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Purvis, Mr. Nelson. Uh, as Dr. Dahl alluded to, you know, unfortunately, we had a bus accident last week, but I, again, wanna publicly commend Jason and his team, and certainly Ms. Hazel, the bus driver, who did an excellent job, and, uh, we really appreciate of Ms. Andrews' professionalism and her longtime service to Moore County Schools. So, just wanted to note that since we got Jason in the room, uh, and he was, and Jason was a rock star on TV-17 there, uh, getting interviewed. So, I know you were nervous about that, Jason did a great job representing Moore County Schools, so thank you. Uh, but this item is about replacement of activity buses. As the board may remember, we now have developed a replacement process and accrual fund for replacement of activity buses, uh, in our system, which was a great need for us, and over the last four or five years, we've been able to move forward with that. So, Ms. Purvis, I'll turn it right over to you. This does come with my recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, and I did bring Mr. Nelson, he is the bus aficionado in the event that you have questions that I can't answer. However, Mr. Johnson did ask the question to just quickly review how we accrue funds to work towards the purchase of activity buses. You'll remember that we changed the method in which we're doing that a, a little while back because originally, we were charging schools for the use, high schools for the use of those buses and making money off of that, which we would put in that fund, uh, for funding activity buses. However, you'll remember, I came to you and shared that that's really break in the high schools because we were charging them extra to put back in a fund to fund those activity buses. So, we were able to work, uh, with Ms. Edmonds to identify some indirect cost revenue that we could allocate annually to those activity buses. So, currently, we only charge the high school athletic, um, use, the amount that it costs to run the bus. So, they only pay for however much gas they use and whatever the cost is to maintain that bus. As you know, state buses, the state O-56 funds pay for the mechanics to cover that. They do not pay for mechanics to work on our activity buses, change the oil, make repairs. So, when we use our mechanics to make those repairs, we must pay that. It's not paid by the state. So, the schools only pay for the repairs that have to be made and the cost to run the bus. We no longer charge extra, uh, for them. It's a break-even for the schools. That, uh, helps their athletics, and we fund the purchase of activity buses with $170,000, which annually is allocated for, uh, the purchase of new activity buses out of indirect cost revenue. You'll see in our executive summary here, we gathered three bids from Carolina Thomas, $157,615, Gregory Poole, $159,619, and White's, $153,213. The lowest responsive bidder was White's. This bus should be delivered by the end of October, so we should receive it pretty soon. We currently have $210,421 accrued and set aside for the purchase, uh, and the purpose of bus, activity bus replacement. That leaves $57,208 as we head into the new year. These funds, uh, as we're allocating $170,000 each year, while we know it does not cost that much yet to purchase a bus, those additional funds roll over to the next year to apply towards the bus, or if we do have an enormous repair that a school might need help with, then those can be used for that purpose because you do know that we had some older activity buses, um, that are still in the fleet, and, you know, we wanna make sure those stay on the road until we can replace all of them. This new bus will be placed at Pinecrest High School, and 8133, which is currently at Pinecrest High School, will be moved to Southern Middle School so that they will have a good activity bus there. Again, this is paid from our Activity Bus Fund, 853506, um, and we ask that you have any questions? Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, sir.
Um, how much life do we have expectation in this hand-me-down bus that's going to Southern, uh, Southern Pines?
Um, so, that, that bus is probably still gonna be good. Uh, it's, I think it's got around 130,000 miles on it. Um, I would say it would probably last us another, for a middle school, you're, you'd probably get another 10 years out of it, but, you know, you're, you're probably gonna push it off before you wear it completely out because you're gonna replace it with a newer. Um, if we stay on the plan we're on, and I think, you know, we'll, we'll push it out before we completely wear one out, so we'll eliminate the, you know, showing up and it look like we showed up in a piece of junk, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And the original goal is that we do have one or two backup activity buses, because at this point, we don't. So, you know, if we were to get to 200,000, 250,000, and we're able to push a newer bus down, then we still would want that bus back here in the event that we have one down or one in for maintenance, we can push one out as a substitute. Correct?
Yeah, well, we continue to use the, even the, the retired ones off, that if it's not a steady thing, we'll put it out, use it to, to get somebody by it because we can save a school money by them using a bus, not having to rent one from a high school, whatever. Yeah, well, we continue to use the, even the, the retired ones off. If it's not a steady thing, we'll put it out, use it to, to get somebody by it because we can save a school money by them using a bus, not having to rent one from a high school, whatever we can do to help. I just, you know, to depend on some of them consistently. You know, you get a call on a Saturday to go look at one that's broke, you, you kind of want to have a better one out there.
Well, I was just gonna say, I was just gonna say thank you for providing that information. I know for the new board members, you know, we weren't here when that happened, and so, um, so it seems like the plan is basically a hundred seventy thousand a year, you're looking at a bus a year, and then whatever leftover you can accrue to potentially use in the future and offset costs, right? Yeah, so I thank you for briefing on that.
Can we stray a little bit to get an update? I'm interested in how our, how our yellow school bus program's going thus far in the school year. I have not heard a lot of complaints.
I've heard them all.
Yes, but I am sure you've heard them all plus some.
Um, I, I feel like we've had a great improvement in the program this year. Um, you know, it wasn't a hundred percent where I wanted it, but, you know, to get the calls to a minimum within the first week of school. Um, even, even the first day of school, there was a time when the phone didn't ring for about an hour, so I was very excited about that. Um, you know, we have experienced a lot less mechanical issues, a lot less breakdowns, a lot less, um, the, the whole, the buses as a whole mechanically are in way better condition. And to see the, the increase in students that we've picked up this year to ride the bus, and to be able to do them with four less drivers than I started with is absolutely amazing. Um, and it's, it's caused some complaints, but we see it and we know why, and, uh, you know, moving forward, we, we know how to fix it, just getting more drivers in to do it, and, you know, hopefully, we can focus on that aspect next.
Software working. I know we changed software last year and, you know.
So, so the software has really, really been awesome. Uh, the accident really paid, the software paid for itself when we had the accident. I was sitting in the office with Tammy, we were working on a bus route, and, uh, I looked down at my phone because it buzzed, and it said, "You've had a crash on three oh one," the GPS told me. It told me to my phone, I got a text message. I wasn't called or notified we had a bus crash until I was halfway there. Um, I was able to pull the dash camera off the bus, sitting right there, and see that I was in, in a woods line. I wasn't on the highway anymore, so I, I knew I had an issue. I, I didn't even wait for the driver to call. I just left. I knew the staff at my office could handle the call. I was on my way to the scene. Um, you know, and, and that's how we could respond so fast because, you know, the software we put in place does its job. Um, it also helps our mechanics on the flip side that we, we were able, we had a bus in Boone over the summer that threw a check engine light and derated, so it wouldn't go. We were able to see what the code was in the bus, picked the part up on the way, and fixed the bus in Boone, and get the bus home without, without having to, you know, to go check it first. We could, we were able, it, it saved us in that aspect, too. Um, but just having those live notifications to my phone, you know, I, I'm, I know something's wrong. I mean, it, sometimes I'm up in the morning just to get buses rolling every day, and I get that harsh break. Well, I can immediately look at that harsh break and see if that bus is still moving, that it's a hit something, is everything okay? And if they're still moving, everything's good, but, but I, I stay in tune with my buses all the time, uh, and it, and it feeds all that to my phone because I've set it up that way.
But as far as the parents and all the parents, letting the parents know the bus is on the way and it's all timely and notification.
A lot better than we had in the past. Um, I've seen a couple little glitches, and we've been able to work with a software company to fix those.
Yeah.
Um, and, and they've worked with us very well to fix the issues we've had. Uh, one of them, if it updates, you have to make sure that you go in and update something else, or it doesn't, it doesn't jive, but it's just a quick fix that they've taught me how to do now so that we can fix it faster, and, yeah, there's no lag, no drop time.
Yeah, Ms. Purvis had, uh, last meeting, I think, well, she said several times that you, you, you've spent a lot of time redoing the routes and all. It sounds like it's paid off, so thank you.
It, it really has, um, because not only, I mean, we, we still got some glitches. Anytime you change something as big as we changed over the summer, you're gonna have some issues. We tried our best to get all of them eliminated, but we still had some, but the structure's there, and, you know, even with those mishaps, we're still finishing earlier this year than we did last year, and, you know, so I can, I can only imagine getting better. You know, there's, there's so many little things we can still tune out of it, and by the end of this school year, we're gonna have this same tune to where next year, it's gonna, we're not gonna have phone calls next year.
I will share, you know, when he says the calls were minimal and by midday, they were dying down, um, he's not reminding you that three years ago, we had to have a call center. And we pulled people from the ed center, from central office, from transportation for three days to help answer phones. So the fact that his office was able to man all the phone calls, and my office didn't need to step in, we didn't have any calls, the front desk receptionist reported she had very few calls. If she did, she just sent them over. The fact that they were able to handle that in the transportation department really is a testament to the improvement and the work that they've done.
And we're short staffed, too.
They are.
I have a question. Um, last week, uh, Dr. Locklear gave me an estimate of the change in ridership, and I wondered, you know, now that we're a little further into the year, um, can you refine that estimate of, I understand ridership is up?
After the first two weeks of school, they'll do a head count.
Yeah, we're gonna do the head count. The, the TD two will be due, uh, within, uh, probably the next month, and we'll do an actual head count, but within the next week, we should be looking at, the drivers are gonna start reporting to us who's not riding, so we can get an actual, but we're having to stop at all the stops. But once we get an actual who's not riding, we can start cleaning some of that up to get a more accurate number. Uh, the last number I saw, we were, we were teetering over seven thousand kids, and I know she still had three hundred to route at that time.
And now, that's an increase from?
Uh, fifty-five hundred is what we had last year, which was still an increase from the prior year.
Right. Well, I'll just chime in as a parent. Uh, we have the right man for the job. Uh, I'm really glad to hear all that, um, reporting out. I'll share also, you know, we're back on the bus this year. Um, and it's worked out exceedingly well for us so far. I was sharing with, uh, Jason before we walked in here, I've got a Life Three Sixty on my phone for my daughter, so I track them anyway with GPS, which is probably a lot of parents do that. And, uh, her stop in the morning is supposed to pick up at six fifty-six and drop off at seven thirty-five, and I can tell from my phone, it picked up at six fifty-six and dropped off at seven thirty-four. And so to be four days in, I can promise you, that is a huge improvement that, from the experience that I had, knowing, of course, that things can change, you know, buses can break down, uh, drivers can change, and that can change this. Uh, but as far as it starts the school year, we've been very pleased, so thank you very much.
I will just reiterate, and I've shared this with you all before, some of the, um, largest portion of the complaints are about the community stops instead of going door-to-door. And if you do get messages about that, I'll remind you, the reason that we're doing that is that every stop you make takes three to four minutes. If we can pick up a group of children at one stop, we're saving minutes on that route. That ensures that we can pick up the number of students that we do in a smaller amount of time and keep the ride time for these students down and not have kids on the bus for three hours. So although it is something that parents may not love, having to go down the street at a group stop, it is the difference between their kid being on a bus an hour and forty-five minutes or two hours and three hours. Uh, sometimes it saves, you know, forty and forty-five minutes a route, so that is necessary for us to take the number of drivers we have and serve the number of students we do and get everybody there all the time.
Also, uh, you know, if you guys hear unsafe bus stop, unsafe bus stop, unsafe bus stop is the word that's been coming through my phone, and it's not an unsafe bus stop when you start asking those questions. It's the walk to the bus stop that they're complaining about, and, uh, you know, just, just something to keep in your minds that if you hear that from parents, that, you know, just what is unsafe about the bus stop? And then they'll be like, "Well, that's the walk there." Well, we created a safe bus stop, and we're responsible to get that kid from a safe bus stop. How they get to that bus stop is the parent's responsibility, and, and that's kind of something that we, we have to coach our parents because they, they keep saying unsafe bus stop. So just while all, all the ears are in here that need to hear it, that's just a piece of information that, that kind of jot down and keep. If you hear it, you kind of know how to attack it.
Jason's team did go out over the summer where these new group stops were and checked those stops, um, prior to putting those on official routes, just to make sure we had enough turnaround room, and there's enough, you know, room for students to gather, et cetera.
Uh, the maximum, which is, is, uh, it's a little less than a mile from what I've looked at.
But that's in only the gated communities.
Only inside a gated neighborhood would we make it over a half.
Well, thank you so much. That was great.
Can I just say, before they go?
Oh, yes.
Um, I, I want to thank you for the effort and determination and creativity that you have applied to these solutions. It makes me very proud to be able to brag on this aspect of Moore County Schools that the buses are serving a whole lot more kids this year, uh, and, and getting them to where they need to go in less time. And that's, that's all down to your effort and innovation.
I will say his perseverance to stick with a difficult job has been amazing, and he's done a great job with it.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
All right, we are at item E, school board meeting agenda for September eighth, twenty twenty five, so let's go through each item and decide if it's going to be on action or consent. So looking at item A, consent.
Action.
Action. Item B, out-of-state field trips, consent.
Consent.
Item C, first reading of new and revised policies, consent.
Action. Maybe you can, I don't.
I think consent. Okay, action. See, the policies. All right, and item D, purchase of new activity bus, consent.
Action, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Action.
Okay, that's purchase of new activity bus. All right, we're gonna keep going, um, and we're at item five, reports, information, and discussion. We're at item A, extend all MCS extracurricular activities to Moore County homeschool families, and alternative over to you, Mr. Hensley.
You know, planning process, board discuss stuff, and the policy committee can take it once they get board input and discuss, you know, when you go into committee, you have the thoughts and ideas of the board as a whole, so this is done in that spirit. So I, this is not a motion, but my recommendation, this is not the one that I sent, I updated this slightly, but the idea is, is that the policy committee, um, uh, implement a policy where, um, or draft a policy where homeschool children, uh, to the greatest extent allowed by governing bodies, assuming the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, whatever, allows homeschool children, uh, residing within Moore County full participation in extracurricular activities in the grade in school to which they would have been assigned of attending Moore County Schools. And then they would pay the same fees, you know, activity fees or whatnot, if you're on the football team, or the baseball team, or the debate team, or whatnot. So the idea is that Moore County stool, schools, to the greatest extent practical and allowed by law and governing bodies, opens up their ex, our extracurricular activities to homeschool students. Uh, and then just some justification, uh, you know, I think, uh, senior leadership of Moore County Schools and, uh, most school board members have, have expressed, uh, uh, respect and support for all educational choices, uh, although with the caveat of, you know, Moore County Schools hopes to be the best. Uh, but everyone has said, "Look, we respect all those, so I think we should invite them in our extracurricular family." Uh, nothing in our mission statement, go back and read our mission statement, nothing in there says that we serve, uh, Moore County School students exclusively. In fact, Moore County Schools, uh, does lots of things as public service and should do more, such as daycare services or whatnot, but that's outside the scope of this. Uh, and to the contrary, you know, uh, programs such as Blend Ed, you know, if we get money associated with it, we reach across the aisle to be inclusive of homeschool students. Uh, I would contend that we can reach across the aisle when there's not funding, uh, tied to it because not everything is about funding. Homeschool families pay taxes, you know, um, people who homeschool, and actually, people send their kids to private schools, too, they pay all the taxes that support all the public schools. They pay federal taxes, they pay state taxes, and they certainly pay property taxes, which builds our buildings and funds our, what, four thousand dollars per student, right? I think is, uh, the local funding, something around that. Uh, and they receive no educational benefits from their taxes, and that's, uh, you know, twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars, plus or minus, I think it's a little higher than that now, uh, funded by their taxes, of which they receive, uh, you know, their, their children don't receive the benefit of. Um, including homeschoolers increases the diversity in our activities. Uh, it's good for both groups of students because, you know, speaking, watching my, my young daughters, uh, you know, they went to Pinecrest their last couple of years, and they had friends who are homeschoolers, and they had, so these people all, you know, all these students, they interact with each other, they're friends, they hang out together, so why not let them participate in extracurricular activities? Uh, and it's good for the communities we serve because at the end of the day, we should be building people of strong character. Uh, so, you know, the question becomes, how do we pay for this? Well, first, uh, everything isn't about more money, as I mentioned earlier. Uh, it doesn't have to be funding tied to something in order for us to adopt it. Um, capacity in extracurricular activities, first of all, I've not heard, well, I did hear of the Air Force ROTC that they had, uh, on, you know, they, they have capacity limitations, but I've not, no one's ever come forth and said, "We just don't have enough space in our chess club or our drama club." So I've not heard of unmet capacity, but, uh, you know, it's worth pointing out that the four hundred students who will eventually be attending the innovative high school, they don't, they are by regulation, innovative high school, they're not allowed to participate in extracurricular activities, right? No extracurricular activities for innovative high school students, so that frees up four hundred existing, once we've transitioned to having all four hundred students in, you know, this year, with a class of ninety, I think, that frees up ninety extracurricular activity slots. And by the time that thing is fully staffed, there'll be four hundred extracurricular activity spots that currently were occupied by students that are, that are freed up, so there's some capacity right there. And as far as funding, to the extent that they cost money, um, well, you know, as I mentioned earlier, they would pay the same student fees, my proposal is, they would pay the same student fees as, uh, Moore County School students. And when the innovative high school comes online, there's two hundred students, you know, if you look at the innovative high school, the junior and senior year of the innovative high school, Moore County School has zero educational, uh, we, we don't teach those students. I mean, we have a principal, and we have a guidance counselor that we pay for, but we do not provide teachers, and so that is, you know, if you take one, if you take twelve thousand, whatever, per student, and multiply that by the juniors and seniors, that's two-point-five million dollars that Moore County Schools is gonna get for students that we don't educate. And then I hear it be the grapevine, there's like an optional fifth year, so maybe that's even, you know, fifty percent larger. So I think we have the money to do it. I think we have the capacity to do it. I think it's good for the students, and I think it's good for the, uh, for the community. Oddly enough, when I posted this a few months ago, just rambling thoughts, most of the homeschool students, I mean, I got backlash, like, "We don't want to participate." Okay, that's fine, but, you know, it should be open to them if they want to. I, I can say there's a, there's a large militant group that don't want to be associated with Moore County Schools, but for those that do, you know, we should welcome them with open arms because they're friends, they're neighbors, and they're fellow taxpayers and citizens, so thank you, that is.
All right, thank you. Any comments?
I am one hundred percent, uh, for, uh, including all our other children, and I, I think that's our duty. I do. And I think if we have the facilities and we have, uh, whatever, every activity, I think it should be open to everybody, whether they attend school here or not. I'm a hundred percent behind you.
All right, thank you. Dr. Dahl?
Go ahead. I, um, I'm going to read for my notes a little bit, because, um, it helps me stay organized and not use too much of everybody's time. Uh, so this is a novel idea to me, uh, and I certainly see that, uh, you know, it seems like a worthwhile idea, that building ties between our students and other youngsters in the community, um, would be a good thing. Um, but as I said, this is new. How, how can we as a stu, school system best serve our community with regard to this question? Um, and I thought, how am I going to come up with my answer on this? And I think it rests on knowing who we are and what our goals are. So fortunately, we have a strategic plan, so I examined the strategic plan, looking for answers. Could I get the strategic plan on the screen? I know it's linked from the agenda in... Thank you. So I looked first at our mission statement, which is kind of small up there, so I'll read it. "More County schools will graduate students with the skills, knowledge, character, critical thinking, and education needed to become proud and successful Americans." So our mission clearly centers students who graduate from our schools. Okay, that's just one data point. Um, my gut tells me that extracurricular activities directly contribute to things in that mission statement, the skills, knowledge, character, critical thinking, and success that are our mission. But we don't have to rely on my gut. Uh, one of our core beliefs is, extracurricular activities are an essential part of our students' development. Okay, can we scroll to goals? Keep going. Oh, no, that's it, I'm sorry, goals. Um, my mental image looked different. "Our strategic plan lists seven goals for the district. All of them, every last one, are based on performance measures for our enrolled students. All of the goals that this board enumerated involve promotion of our enrolled students' success. Our goals center our enrolled students." All right, let's turn to board priorities. Uh, and those are spelled out further down, can we scroll up a little? There we go. Okay, our, um, there are a number of these, one is community engagement. "I looked to see if this provides a basis to involve unenrolled student, children in our schools." So the strategic plan says, under community engagement, "Strong partnerships between schools, families, businesses, and local organizations enhance student outcomes." Again, outcomes can only refer to enrolled students, because it is their outcomes that we track in test scores, Lexile levels, graduation rate, and success post-graduation. Further elaboration under this heading specifies that community engagement is for the purpose of enriching our enrolled students' learning opportunities. Extracurricular activities are listed as a board priority. Here's what the strategic plan says. "Participation in athletics, arts, clubs, and other extracurricular programs improves student engagement and academic performance. Participation contributes to higher attendance rates, lower dropout rates, and increased college and career readiness." Here again, the board has identified extracurricular activities as a priority because they improve specific outcomes for our enrolled students. In summary, the importance of extracurricular activities to the development and success of our enrolled students appears throughout our strategic plan, in our mission, in our core values, in our goals, and in our board priorities. It's clear to me that the only way opening our extracurricular activities can be consistent with our strategic plan is if doing so in no way detracts not one little bit from the value extracurriculars provide our enrolled students. I discussed this with the superintendent. As a member of the policy committee, uh, in the expectation of ha, uh, helping craft a policy for this, I've given, given a lot of thought as to what a policy would have to contain in order to open extracurriculars while maintaining their value for our students. The superintendent pointed out, and this was a little while ago, so he may want to, uh, modify this, but he pointed out that the policy and its administration would be very complicated, and he reminded me that homeschooled students already have access to extracurricular activities through the Blend Ed program. Complicated administration means time spent by staff. That means time taken away from other duties, duties we have identified as priorities. This applies to administration and teachers. And let me remind everyone that with regard to teachers, adding more responsibilities without expressly lightening their burden somewhere else is not compatible with our retention goals. So colleagues, um, to get my vote on this, you will have to provide a crystal clear logistical explanation of why the superintendent is mistaken and how extracurriculars could be opened to unenrolled students without detracting from what they provide our enrolled students, without creating any burden on staff time, and without creating liability. Thank you.
Other comments, or?
Uh, yeah, I've got some comments, I won't be nearly as polished as that, so thank you, Dr. Dahl. Um, so I am coming at it from a different angle, or different point of view, I think, um, one that, one that I have a lot of interesting experience with. So, um, I was tasked with, uh, building the Blend Ed program, uh, and being project lead for that while I was here in Moore County schools. Um, and I met with many homeschool families as part of that, so I met with a lot of families, they choose homeschooling for a lot of different reasons. Um, it was really good for me to hear their reasons, um, religious curriculum that they wanted to keep in place, uh, flexibility for travel sports, um, you name it, uh, lots of different reasons that our parents homeschool. And so it was really cool to work with them when we developed this program to see if it kind of fit their needs. We did this as a response to market share, and so market share, if you haven't dove into that, uh, much as a board, it's an extremely important topic, and that is, um, ensuring that more students come to Moore County schools and are enrolled in Moore County schools, um, because we have these populations that are growing, and our market share has been dwindling over the years. That is a clear and present concern, that we all need to be concerned with. Um, and it was because of that, um, and I had a lot of experience also in Cabarrus County, I'd come, before coming home to Moore County, um, the school I worked with turned into a STEM magnet school as a response to market conditions. Parents wanted more STEM for their kids, recreated a program to make sure that they could do it. Um, and so here in Moore County, when we were talking and looking at market share, one of the things that we came up with is this Blend Ed program, to do exactly what we're all describing here, uh, reach out to our homeschool families, make them a partner with us, um, don't wait for them to come to us, we go to them, and we talk about what we can offer as a system. Um, the way it was built, and again, I'm not an expert anymore, four years ago, I was heavily entrenched in it, um, but it was built to scale, and so I know that it has scaled a bit, um, it did start at McDeeds Creek, and it's expanded now at West Pine Elementary. And when I say built to scale, um, what that means is, if you have two classrooms in a K5 building, you can get Blend Ed started if there's a need in that area. So for example, if we had two classrooms at, um, West Pine Elementary that were open, and we had a good homeschool population that would be willing to endeavor with us, that's a good place to scale up. Um, and enrolling in Blend Ed is exactly the reason why a lot of these, uh, parents do this, is so they can have access to all of our extracurriculars and all of our services. Um, you're right, there is a portion of our homeschool curriculum, our homeschool families that do not want to be a part of Moore County schools, and of course, we respect that, um, but those that are interested, we have a place for them, um, and it's important that we enroll them in our, um, system, so that we can serve them to the fullest of our capabilities. And so I, as a notion of market share and a big believer in market conditions and competitive, I am a huge believer in, the more choice and competition there are, the more innovation happens within a system. And so that's the whole reason Blend Ed came to be, was because of those conditions, and that was an innovative way to bring families back into Moore County and let them be supported for all of our services. So I am coming at it from an angle of, this is a competitive edge that we as a school system, I am not interested in giving away for free or for a light fee. This is something that a lot of our high schoolers come back to, to school for us, uh, for our award-winning athletics, we have the best arts programs in the state, we have the best drama club, we have robotics and STEM clubs, um, all of these extracurriculars are reasons for kids to choose Moore County schools and families to choose Moore County schools, and I want to hold on to that, so we can partner with them and bring them into the fold, um, through Blend Ed and expand that option. I have a lot of other notes, because like I said, I was, I was entrenched in this for years, um, designing this and hoping that it could take off the way it has, um, but I'll stop there.
Can I respond to that just briefly?
Sure.
I just want to connect that to my remarks. The vision statement, "More County schools, the first and best choice," dovetails with what you just said.
Ms. Davis?
Were you going to say something? I was going to say yours is, it just is polished as Ms. Dahl's, and you did it all off of the, it's amazing, like superstar level. So I was the homeschool parent that wanted nothing to do with public education, so I think it's, I sit in the most unique seat, seat possibly, uh, here. Uh, but we already provide exactly what you're suggesting through Blend Ed, and it, I mean, it's, it's free to sign up for Blend Ed as far as I know, other than, so we already offer it. Um, there's too many logistical things for me, whenever it was first, um, presented. If we don't have them enrolled, how, how are they protected, and how do we track them? How do we know about them? It just didn't, didn't seem like we, it was logical to do. Um, one argument that I would say is, the whole time I homeschooled, I didn't pay property taxes, because I rented. So not every homeschool family does pay property taxes, we pay sales taxes and other things, but you can't be dogmatic in this statement that all homeschools, homeschoolers pay property tax. Um, and there's a lot of misinformation out in the public, um, I actually spoke, I know a lot of homeschool children and parents, because they're my people. But, um, one lady actually thought that we received the $12,000 that we, or so, that we, that we get for our children, for when their children were enrolled in their homeschool. Like, they think that we get the money, that Moore County schools gets the money for it, and I was like, no way, because she thought that was a true injustice, which it would be if we got the money for them, um, but we don't. But we do get the money that we need to support, uh, all of our extracurriculars if they're signed up through the Blend Ed program. And I had no idea that you were, um, part of that, and that, that just makes me respect you so much more, Mr. Johnson, because it's a great program. Mr. Vinway, I know, uh, loves going and visiting and seeing, so I think that we already actually provide it through Blend Ed, and I don't think that it needs to change. Go ahead, sir.
I was just going to make a comment, thanks for doing what you did. I think Connect Academy and Blend Ed and that whole genre is the future of, of, of education, frankly. Um, yeah, I'm going to go into a lecture moment. If you look at the big picture in terms of Moore County, Moore County is in the business of accumulating knowledge. Knowledge is a commodity, very valuable commodity. The more you have of it, the more likely you are to prosper. And I think wherever that knowledge comes together from is irrelevant to Moore County. It, and I, I think we're, uh, I, I think we're parsing this too closely by trying to eliminate these homeschool Blend Ed kids from this equation. Um, I don't think it's, as, as David has outlined, I don't think it's going to cost us any money to, to bring them into the fold. There probably not going to be that many to begin with. Um, I'm for bringing these kids together and, and sharing the knowledge and sharing the, the resource we have here with our kids from Moore County. Uh, I'm, I'm in favor of, of, of bringing these kids in and rent, is the, the extracurricular arena. That's just my point.
I just want to make a quick point, it was not just me. Absolutely not. Yeah, it was a great team of folks, and it took us several years of forethought and visiting other places.
Yeah, but look what the outcome is.
And what, well, what we did, we went to other places, and honestly, the places that we went to that were starting this kind of partnership, we walked away saying, we know we can do it better. Um, and I would also, if homeschool families are tuning in to any of this conversation, I would stress to them, please contact, uh, Jamie Burr, uh, the principal of Connect Academy, who's over the Blend Ed program, and just explore your options, because honestly, the, the parents that want to participate in extracurriculars, um, if they just have that conversation and figure out what it takes to do that, um, I think they'd be very pleased with the result. Um, and the other thing, I'll, I'll just note that I, I hadn't experienced any homeschool families that had asked for all of our extracurricular offerings. Um, they're very specific, you know, if they, if they have a student that wants to do marching band, they may want to join Blend Ed to do marching band. If they have a specific interest in CTE, they may be a CTE student and be Blend Ed and then do their own homeschool curriculum paired with that. All those options are available to them, and I feel like I want to push staff to continue innovating with that, because, um, the program can grow as long as people know more about it.
It's not a cookie cutter, it's an adaptable
Correct.
commodity you've got there.
Yeah. And it's not me.
All right, thank you so much.
I got my second round of comments.
Okay, well, I want to say something real quick.
Sure.
Um, just that, uh, the conversation has been very rich and thoughtful, so thank you for the great comments. Um, our Blend Ed program is the way that we encourage homeschool families to join us, and we would welcome them, um, with open arms into our Blend Ed. Uh, it, we are, we do find ourselves in a marketplace as a school district, as an education source, so that is very important, and it's real, and we want to make sure that we continue to grow and improve. And, yes, sir, final comment.
So, so, uh, just a couple responses to what people have said. First of all, Ms. Dahl asked the wrong question. She said, you'll have to show me where it doesn't add a burden to our faculty and staff. Well, first of all, no student and, and helping any child is never a burden, so maybe she ought to rephrase that. But more importantly, as I said, their parents and their families are taxpayers. They pay state, local, and federal taxes, which fund our schools, so it's not a burden to offer a service to a taxpayer, right? And regardless of what Ms. Davis says, renters pay property tax because in effect, because you are paying your landlord's property tax. So even when you rent, you are paying property tax, because rest assured that the property tax is passed, uh, passed through the rent. Um, the, um, Mr. Johnson said, you know, w, we can't give this away for free. Well, again, you know, my angle is, they're taxpayers, we're not giving it to them for free, they, they're paying for the services that they're not receiving because of a choice that their family made. Let's talk about market share, I have the graph right here. The, the Moore County school market share is currently at 67% of eligible students, that's down from 85% uh, in 2010. It's been pretty much a waterfall here, there was a little bit of pause from, uh, from 2020 to 2022, and then it just started.
What's your source, real quick?
This is from the North Carolina DPI.
Okay, just want to measure.
Yeah, yeah, I've got, I've, I've got a spreadsheet that shows the homeschool students and the private school students and the charter school students and MCS students.
So we need to up our market share, then.
Well, it's 67%, and it's declining at about a 45% slope over the last three years. And that's the trend right there.
We've got to fix it.
So, a danger is, right, a danger is, you know, this gets below 50%, and all of a sudden, you got 50% of the families who don't want to fund public schools, because they've chosen a different educational choice. So therefore, we really ought to be in the service business, um, which leads me to my direct point. One of the points that I made up there is it's not all about funding, it's not all about funding. I, I showed that the innovative high school is going to give us a $2 million windfall, it's going to free up 400 extracurricular students who otherwise wouldn't participate in, in extracurricular sports, but everyone brings up Blend Ed, Blend Ed. That's exactly the point that I made, and actually, several people here, Blend Ed, Blend Ed. Yeah, it's like, enroll in this program so that Moore County schools gets money, and then we'll be happy to let you participate in our extracurricular. we'll be happy to let you participate in our extracurricular activities. It is intentionally Blend Ed and it was stated here today, one of its things was to dangle the carrot. You can participate in our athletics, but you have to enroll in one class or two cla- whatever it is. Well, I was here during the debates on that and we can go back and watch the videos where the, the, the central office proudly stood up and said, yeah, if a student takes one class, two classes, whatever it is, we get full funding for it. That's why I said in my slide, it's not all about the money, it's about developing the children and their character and these people's family, uh, are taxpayers. So we shouldn't, it shouldn't have to be tied to, oh, we get more funding, we get more funding, which is exactly the justification that three people used here today. So that's it.
Okay. All right. Okay. She just made a comment. Well, it was a one sentence, I believe, comment. So, can you hold it? I know. Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
No, no, can't do it, one sentence. Okay, we need to move on. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Doll, I appreciate it. All right, so we are at item B, North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and State Board of Education Strategic Plan Review and Mr. Benway? If you'd like to. That was your topic.
I think our last discussion opened the idea of, um, sitting down and extending our dignity perhaps.
Okay. And, um, yeah. Pull it up real quick, too.
Mr. Benway, your microphone.
Oh, whoops. Thank you.
No, he just.
Yeah, it's, it is now, okay. So we have assets all across the, the county. I think we need to be able to have a vision of where those assets are going to be best, uh, employed more than two years beyond our current vision. As I said before, we, we, we have the, the construction schedule that looks out 10 years, but our vision doesn't encompass that, doesn't give resolution to, to those, that, that construction. We're in the process of, of looking at a, at a population increase of 80,000 people over the next 20 years, perhaps more. In fact, the, the planning board, the land, land use planning board is using that figure as their, their base figure. So I think we need to be able to describe what it is we are all about and what we do in 2035 and 2045. And then build a pathway to getting that, to getting there. I think we have, we've begun to do that a little bit in, in certain areas, but we haven't developed a programmatic approach that ta- that, that ties together the concept, time and the dollars along the way. I think that's, that's the sort of planning that Ford Corporation does, that, uh, any, any university or college does, and any cartel on the Mexican border does for that matter. So there are just some fundamental processes that we need to go through, I think, to be able to portray what we are all about and push on in that direction. Hopefully, that vision will also support a unified vision at county level. And we haven't gotten that worked out quite yet. But, uh, in the absence of a county unified, um, vision, I think we ought to start on our own. That, that's my point. And I would like to recommend we, we form a group, a task group to do that, or to begin to do that.
And, um, you were focusing on the strategic plan for North Carolina.
Right.
The State Board of Education and, um, Cindy helped us sign up for a webinar with Mo Green and if anyone else would like to join in that, just let Cindy know about how the state strategic plan, um, you know, what it entails and how it impacts us.
We, we find ourselves in difficulty too because I don't think that the strategic plan at state level is mature enough for us to, to build the supporting plan on. Given that fact, an awful lot of assumptions are going to have to be made. And assumptions just te- are just temporary placeholders for the truth until we finally get at it. But the more assumptions you have, the more shaky your plan becomes. I'm hopeful, I'm, I'm really looking forward to, to listening in to this event with, uh, Mr. Green on the 17th, is that?
Yes, yes, sir.
17th September? And, and try to get a sense of where he's really coming from and what his real intent is. We don't have a, 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 uh, DPI intent with this whole process yet. Nothing is identifiable.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. And, um, it is a very comprehensive document and it takes a lot of time to
It does.
digest it and so we're gonna hear from him, so I'm looking forward to that. If anybody else wants to join, just let Cindy know.
Yeah.
Okay? Any other comments?
My only concern about the State, uh, Board of Education Strategic Plan, and I voiced this last time when we brought it up, is to the extent that, uh, it differs from our strategic plan ideologically and, uh, because I have grave concerns, well, I have, not grave, I have some concerns about, um, about what they're gonna do with some of the issues and how they phrased it. And it, my concern is, look, we are Moore County or the state, we are more autonomous than we think we are, I think. We, we can be more autonomous. And to the extent that our strategic plan and guidance differs from theirs, that we need to make sure that any representative that we have that interfaces with them, that they represent our, uh, our strategic plan and our ideology behind it.
I agree. Okay, thank you very much. Um, great discussion and let's move on to C Presidential Fitness Test and President's Council on Sport, Fitness and Nutrition as requested by Board Member Bruno. Ms. Bruno?
I just wanted to bring this up. I have no presentation, I have nothing. I just wanted to bring this up so that when it is out in full force, I would love Moore County to be part of this. I know, um, the ki- it's, it's competitive, the kids love it, they love to get the badges, they love to get the, um, uh, the piece of paper that comes with it. And I just think that if everybody across the United States is going to do this, that we should be part of it.
Thank you, ma'am, any comments?
Did anyone here do this in school? Am I the only one that did this? Okay. I still remember.
I couldn't do the pull-ups.
I, I couldn't do the, uh, stretch past your feet. You know how to do that part? Right, I couldn't do that one. I think most of the guys couldn't, but anyway. Uh, I just want to say that, um, despite my negative experience stretching past my feet, I would agree that anything we can do to increase physical fitness and, um, yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with it at all. So hopefully we can get some more information on it and I, I enjoyed it, so.
Just for information, we did reach out to the State Department and they're awaiting information, as you know, Ms. Bruno. So once we do, we'll, we'll circle back. But, uh, there is a current standard in the health curriculum that our PE teachers use in middle school that pushes, uh, on this, uh, physical fitness and measuring yourself and, and becoming more physically fit. However,
And I understand that.
However, I'm just saying there is a standard that addresses it, but we're awaiting information from the state.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm not saying we don't want to do it, I'm saying, just wanted you to know there is a standard in the curriculum that our teachers use to push this forward currently.
But it's getting that badge and it's getting that certificate that means a lot.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if I could chime in. So, look, 50 years ago, 40 years ago, you know, well, as I said, Moore County Schools has 67% of the market share of children attending school in Moore County. 40 years ago, 50 years ago, I bet you public schools nationwide had 95% participation rate. I just made that up, but I bet it was that or close to it. And our schools were the envy of the world. Our literacy was off the chart, people could do math in their head, uh, people would know how to use a tape measure, you know? We, our educational system was the envy of the world. And, and somewhere, and I don't know when, all of a sudden everyone changed, they came out with all these new ideas and eliminate competition and eliminate all of that stuff. I am, I am. And, you know, look, the schools eliminated phonics in, in favor of sight words. We had to circle back around and we're back on phonics, right? Because we saw this. I am on topic.
I don't know.
We, we eliminated traditional math in favor of Common Core and all of a sudden it did this and now we're back to traditional math. We eliminated, Moore County Schools as part of a nationwide movement eliminated valedictorians and salutarians. We reinstated. No, I am.
We're talking about the Presidential Fitness Test.
I am, and, and I'm making the point as to how, how public schools over the last 20 or 30 years did away with all these things that made us great, that made us, it, it, it was phonics, sight words, doing away with phonics in favor of sight words did not improve education, doing away with traditional math in favor of Common Core did not improve. It demonstrably decreased it, that's why we've gone back to phonics and we've jettisoned co- Common Core. Eliminated the spelling bee, eliminated competition, competition is what makes people better. We eliminated the Presidential Physical Fitness Test in schools nationwide and replaced it with some watered-down version. We eliminated cooked on-site meals, right? So the public school, which once had 95% participation rate and was the envy of the world, all of a sudden is down here and we're like not even the top 10 education anymore. That's because all this stuff was watered down. And we've made strides in the last couple of years to realize those mistakes. And that's why we reinstated phonics, that's why we ran, we did away with Common Core, that's why we reinstated valedictorians and the spelling bee. The last two things that we have not reinstated, the President's Physical Fitness Test and cooked on-site meals, we need to reinstate those because the last two have contributed to childhood obesity, diabetes and created lifelong habits in our young people, why we profess to develop the whole child and we've done anything but that. In fact, over the last couple of decades, educrats have watered that down.
All right. Out of order, let's not, I'm gonna stop you there, Mr. Hensley, that was rude to say educrats.
I wasn't referring to any particular person.
That was totally rude. So let's move on. All right, we are at item D, Mr. Benway, MCS Exceptional Children Teacher Candidate Program as requested by Mr. Benway.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have a couple of slides, which I will have next time we do this. A couple of weeks ago, I, I sent a memo around, I think you've all received a copy of it. Subject MCS Exceptional Children Teacher Candidate Program. And the whole notion of this is that we've suffered a chronic shortage of EC teachers for a long time. The rest of the state is in the same condition and not, if not the rest of the nation. Perhaps it's time to start building our own, um, our, our own T, EC teachers. And the, the vehicle is already in place to begin to do that and that's the, the Moore Teacher, I'm, I'm sorry, the Grow More Teacher Scholarship Program that kicked off last year. Uh, this program will, will, uh, see, uh, these selected students, scholarship students go through Pembroke and come back and teach, hopefully. Well, in, in my view, we ought to prioritize that, that teaching to EC teachers. And I'm suggesting that beginning in the junior year in high school, um, that selected students begin to get introduced to the whole concept of being EC teachers. And encourage them to apply for the scholarships accordingly. And I'm suggesting that we start off with three, three high schools next year to, to get, uh, award pro- uh, scholarships to. And then each year, we keep accumulating the pipeline, if you will, of qualified EC teachers. During the, the, the years in college, during the summertime, they would come back as an internship almost, under the tutelage of a mentor, uh, EC mentor, you know, uh, experienced mentors, uh, in the EC arena. And even get paid for coming back to do that. So over time, we've co-opted them basically into being thinking, I'm going to be an EC teacher, by gosh. And by the time they start coming out with the end of the pipeline, hopefully beginning in 2030, we can now start begin to alleviating our, our shortages. Right now, we're kind of reduced to beating the brush and asking somebody if they know somebody, et cetera, et cetera. But if we can program 10, 12, 15 students in the pipeline, we can begin to address our, our needs on a yearly basis with some predictability. We might even generate some, some, uh, excess, if you will, in which case we can, we can broker them to other counties for a year to forget their experiences and then come back and fill a, a slot. Anyway, we, um, Dr. Locklear and, and the chair were good enough to host a, a sit-down informal discussion about that, uh, last week, that possibility. Uh, I think there's some general, general interest in it. We even had a lady from Sand Hills Community College, I, her name escapes me, who was
Jermaine Elkins?
Yes. So I think there's some possibilities to, to mature this whole notion and perhaps even hold it aside for the foundation to consider, uh, funding portions of. If not the foundation, then let's get some commercial entities locally here to, to look into funding some of these, these scholarships. I think it has the potential to alleviate a great deal of pain by growing our own EC teachers. Uh, if you don't have a copy of the, this memo that I sent around, it's a two pager, page and a half, I'll be glad to send you another copy. I'm sorry? It is, okay. Good. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Benway.
Any questions?
Any comments?
So why do we have a hard time retaining EC teachers, Dr. Locklear?
Neil, you join us? Uh, well, first of all, I would say that it's, it's a, it's a challenge to recruit EC teachers. Our EC classrooms can be challenging, there's additional workload on our exceptional children's teachers, but I would say that I think we've made some, some real progress in trying to ma- be intentional about how we're supporting our teachers. We're finding we're hiring more s- more, um, non-traditional pathway teachers who are residency licensed to become EC. We appreciate the board's support earlier this year on purchasing the Goalbook software and Neil probably hit on that a little bit on Steer Your Thunder. But Neil, if you could just talk a little bit about, um, which is part of that informal conversation we have with Mr. Benway, the context, uh, of recruitment and what we're working on to retain.
Thank you, Dr. Locklear. Yes, um, we, EC, uh, even in our back-to-school meeting with our beginning-of-year teachers, I, I told them, sat in front of 160 of our licensed people and said, what you do is hard. We recognize that, I've, I've done it, uh, as a speech pathologist and as a practicing EC, um, employee and, and it is, there, there are a lot, there's a lot that comes with it, especially the burden of paperwork, the writing of IEPs, of, um, the pedagogy a lot of times and classroom management too. Uh, but there are a lot of pieces to it and, and we do see, um, we do see attrition with it for sure. One of the things that Goalbook and it's what I put before you guys was that, that Goalbook really, the studies do show that, that that is something that has really helped with our beginning teachers and helping with that attrition. Because it is, uh, we have, we, we span the, the gamut. We have self-contained teachers who are in cross-categorical classrooms that work with our more complex needs. Um, we have teachers that do, um, they, they co-teach with Gen Ed teachers, we have teachers that do resource, um, as well and inclusion in those classrooms. Uh, it, it is, it's a very challenging field with a lot of meetings, a lot of, a, a lot of administrative work in the scheduling and working together and kind of organizing teams of psychologists, of related, um, related of psychologists, of related, related support providers, and there's just a lot of moving parts and, and a lot of, a lot of support that they require as a result. Hope I answered that.
Yeah, it's, so, that, it is a tough job, it, it is a tough job, I mean, just from me on the outside looking at it, it's a tough job. So, you know, I'm gonna go back to proficiency pay, I mean, grow your own is good and noble, and maybe it'll work and, you know, we'll get a pipeline, but again, you know, look, take medicine, you have general practitioners who make this, and if you're a radiologist, you make this, and if you're, you know, a thoracic surgeon, you make this, and if you're a brain surgeon, you make this, right? But what I don't understand about academia is, we have, and no offense to any of these lines, right, but we have plenty of English teachers, we have plenty of history teachers, but we have a shortage of math teachers and science teachers and EC teachers. Supply and, the reason why you cannot fill those billets is supply and demand, right? Assuming the work conditions are good and all that, if you're not getting what you need by paying this, supply and demand, you know, where X meets Y, you need to pay more. So, I go back to proficiency pay for selected occupations within academia, you know, if math, again, math teachers, science teachers, EC teachers, if they're in short supply because their labor pays more elsewhere, although they would rather teach, than to keep them in the teaching profession or to keep them in Moore County, you'd pay them more for their specialty. It happens, oddly, it happens almost everywhere else except academia, and there's just, I brought this up for years, and I'm like, more pay, more pay, and I just get these stern looks from academia, like, oh, we can't possibly give someone more pay, 'cause that, I don't know why, it's not, it's unequal or something, but the way you solve a labor shortage in this case is more pay, and you have proficiency pay for specific occupations within academia, but it just seems to be resisted.
Well, I'll chime in.
Oh, go ahead. Do you wanna talk about pay?
Uh, halfway. So, I wanna thank Ken for bringing this to the table, I think it's a, a great idea, and I love to dive into things that, you know, have such a direct linkage to our strategic plan and recruitment retention and the types of teachers that we need in place, and when I hear ideas like this and as well as, you know, proficiency pay and things like that, the, the question that comes to mind is, why not us? You know, Moore County Schools is an excellent place to work, it's an excellent place to live, and we have a lot of benefits that we bring to the table, and I love the idea of finding new solutions to chronic problems, and so, I just wanna say thank you to that, I'd like, we're gonna do committee reports here in a moment, but I'm hoping to bring the budget committee together and start to have these kind of conversations and these kind of directions and see what's feasible, because problems that you don't address don't, don't get solved, and so, I wanna thank Ken for bringing this to the table.
Dr. Dahl?
I wanna echo what Mr. Johnson said, and thank Mr. Benway for bringing this, it is an important thing for us to consider. I wanna ask Mr. Waters a question, is it, is it, am I correct in understanding that our EC teachers have to provide testing services to some of the other schools in Moore County?
It depends on, if you're talking about itinerant, we do have, we do have itinerant employees that provide some testing, but most of our EC teachers are housed in, in singular spots, and they do help some with testing, they absolutely do, if that's what you're talking about, if you're talking about like check-ins or, or.
Well, no, my understanding is that, that a, a number of EC teachers are required, possibly by law, to provide testing for schools in Moore County that are not part of Moore County Schools.
We do have a, we do have a requirement for, for homeschool and for private school families to reach out to us if they would like to seek educational testing and to seek possible placement as in an exceptional children's program, and we are tasked with, with doing that. We've kind of revamped how we're doing that. Last year, we had a model where individual schools, we tried to, we tried to vary the load and tried to share the load across our sites for doing that testing that's required, and we're moving to a little different model this year where our specialists that work with me in the exceptional children's program, right now, what we're looking at is that being housed with, with those professionals and those, and those specialists. As far as the psychologists that would be providing the testing along with that, that would be something that we would kind of, we're, we're looking at kind of just, just rotating with that, so we are kind of shifting that a little bit. I hope that answers your question.
Kind of, yeah, I appreciate that you are working hard to, and I think the Goalbook is a wonderful example of being innovative to try to recognize what creates a burden and, and reduce it so that the, the teachers can focus on what motivates them. But anyway, back to, back to this proposal, I just wanted to kind of input one thought, and that is that our high school students are very early in their careers, and, you know, having dealt with high school students over the years, it seems like a lot of people expect them to make commitments about their career, and they have so little experience on which to base decision-making that, that we, you know, we have to be judicious about asking them for commitments, so I just am hoping that if this program is developed, that we can balance wanting a commitment to return to Moore County Schools with recognition that these are very young people and very early in their career to be making commitments.
Yeah, there was no, there was no intention of having a high school senior commit at that point, except for the scholarship, going for the scholarship, the, the first couple of, of introductory days, if you will, would occur in, in the high school arena, just offering it up, getting it to understand a little bit about what EC is about, and perhaps pointing in that direction to apply for a scholarship that would result in, in an EC degree. So, it's, it's a crawl, walk, run approach, we're not gonna try to get a commitment in, in high school.
Any others?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that in response to what David said, my very first job as a special needs teacher, I was given extra pay because they were so short in looking for teachers. This was in East Lansing, Michigan, and I got a very large bonus to sign on.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Benway, for bringing this to our attention, and we'll continue to study it, and we may wanna get involved, you know, learning more about recruitment and retention of teachers too, as an additional part. All right, we are at item E, Board Committee Reports and Updates. Is any, I guess our policy committee was, well, we've already seen your minutes, did you wanna add anything, Ms. Davis?
Not necessarily, but. The use of wireless communication devices.
Yes, ma'am, that was an, that was an informational topic.
Cause it's ahead of time.
For, for the, that we shared with the committee, that the, the law that you've heard a lot about in the news, our policy already allows for us to limit the use of wireless communication devices in the classroom during instructional time, which all of our schools, for the most part, already did, and so, when that, being, trying to be ahead of the law, anticipating that passage of it, we did have a work group this, this summer, make sure we had a consistent practice and regulation moving forward in the new year, that information's been shared with families, and that regulation and procedure adheres to the law, so wireless communication devices are not allowed in the classroom during instructional time unless it's for an instructional purpose driven by the teacher, unless it's for an emergency medical need or in a need driven by an IEP from an exceptional children, those are put away, are off, and required to do so. In high school, students are allowed to look at them during transition time or during lunch, but that's the consistent process and practice that we're using. We may need to look at the policy once any other recommendations come down from the North Carolina School Boards, and we'll do that in consultation with our council.
I have quite, just to be, just to be very clear, so, let me restate this, so, K through eight, the students can have the devices with them during the school, during the school day, but they had to be off during the entire day and put away in their bag or whatever, right?
Or locker, yes, sir.
Or locker, they cannot have it out and they cannot have it on at any point during the school day.
That's correct, and I'm looking to make sure I'm, I'm giving you the right answer. In high school, we do allow them to take them out during, uh, transition time and during lunch.
During transit, so, so they can have them with them, so all students can have them with them at all times during, during the school day, but they had to be off and stowed. High school students, when they're transitioning from classes and lunch, can have them out and actively using them.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I have one more, yeah, we, we took no action on the others, and we did have one that we spoke about in closed session that Mr. Benway had presented, and we'll be discussing that again in the upcoming closed section, closed session this Monday, and possibly outside of afterwards.
All right, thank you very much. We're at item six, Board Comments, Mr. Hensley will start, if you don't mind.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Only thing is, excited for more innovative high school ribbon cutting tomorrow. I need to get some advice on how well-dressed I should be for ribbon cutting, I'll be talking to Dr. Lake Locklear about that. And the other comments I had were for the bus and the transportation, I've already addressed those, and so I just wanted to give another kudos for the flexibility and the passion of Jason and his team on that, because that's a huge parent concern, and the fact that ridership has, has jumped from fifty-five hundred to seven thousand reflects that a lot of parents like me, every year, we get the bus route information, we get disappointed. This year, I got excited, and so that was a big, big help and just a laud, and I understand that we're going to recognize the driver that was involved with the accident next week, and so I just wanna say I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Benway, any comments?
Yes, ma'am, just one thing, late-breaking proposal, I'm in belt-fed proposal mode right now, I guess.
Okay.
The twenty-ninth submitted that, and the subject was US Constitution and the Celebration of America Two-Fifty. We've got, and I'll have a couple of slides on that next week, we've got Constitution Day coming up on the seventeenth of September, the General Assembly has urged various parts of our, our society to celebrate in some way Constitution Day. I've suggested that we ring the bell here at noon time and have appropriate comments by the superintendent and the chair, and that would just kick off a look into 2026, and perhaps we can develop over time a curriculum-friendly approach to, to celebrating the various events, building up to the signing of our constitution next year. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bruno?
I loved what Mr. Benway said, I think that that, that would be wonderful. I, I absolutely loved the Pinehurst, Pinehurst, the Pinecrest Junior ROTC here today. These kids have such character, such dignity, such citizenship, I, I really enjoyed it, and I can't speak highly enough. Tomorrow, my ladies' luncheon, we are having the Navy Junior ROTC cadets from Union Pines at our luncheon, we're going to have well over a hundred and fifty people in attendance, and this is a great way of educating our public about our great kids, so, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Dahl?
I just wanna, once again, give kudos to Mr. Nelson in the Transportation Department, and, and just kind of put their accomplishments in the broader context of, we all know that districts across the state and across the nation are having a hard time recruiting bus drivers, and they have found a way to solve a problem that we know is a chronic problem and improve our performance, and, and, you know, I think we should remember that as a model, because we have other chronic issues that we have to deal with. But congratulations and kudos to Transportation and Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, okay? Just wanna thank everyone for a, a very good meeting, and thank you for thinking of Moore County Schools and what's best for our students and staff, and I just wanna encourage you to think about those teacher salaries, because we get our funding from the North Carolina General Assembly, so let's remember to remind our legislators and representatives that our teachers need comprehensive stra, uh, salaries that are comparable to other professions. So, thank you so much for your time, we're at item seven, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.